Jamie, y'all set? Great. Good evening, I'm gonna call the Board of Selectments Meeting for Monday, August 21st, 2017 to order. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that the town will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience that wishes to video or audio tape must notify the chairman now. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone for weekly briefing? Good evening, Chief.
Chief Dave Gilman, Harwich PD. I'd like to introduce you to Charlie Brooks. If some of you are suffering from deja vu, it's because Charlie already works for the town of Harwich.[65.11][65.11](laughter) However, he's been with us as a full-time dispatcher since December, right Charlie? He came on in December?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so, he got hired by the town of Harwich as a dispatcher for us in December, and he's been working with us ever since, doing a fantastic job. We recently had a full-time police officer open up with the resignation of Officer Phil Southworth. So Charlie, I'm putting Charlie's name forward, he's aspired to be a police officer, he was very honest in the interviews for dispatch, he let us know that. And we're very, very pleased to give him this opportunity. We're looking to get him onboard in mid-January, and he'll start the academy at the end of January.
Great.
Pending approval.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Please, sir.
Anyone else for weekly briefing? Public comment? Oh, Ginny.
Hi there, I'm Ginny Hewitt from Brooks Library. I have some really great news, can you hear me? I never get this right.
Yes.
Some really great news. The library has a set of annual town reports dating back to 1960, 1866, sorry, 151 years. So we've been working to put together a digitization project, and on Friday, our reference librarian informed me that the project has been accepted by the Digital Commonwealth, which is a, it's a nonprofit that's working in cooperation with the Boston Public Library to digitize images, documents, and just other resources documenting our cultural heritage in the Commonwealth. So we don't have a time schedule for the annual town reports to be digitized, but it's now in the queue. So it's not a question of if they'll accept our application, it's just a question of when. The number of volumes that we have exceeds what the Digital Commonwealth's guidelines call for, for a year for one institution. However, they've also told us that they prefer to digitize all the volumes in a collection at one time. So, we're hopeful that they'll do the whole thing this year, if not, they'll do some this year, and the rest next year. So, I've also checked with the town clerk to make sure she didn't have any earlier town reports, and she doesn't. Her set of town reports starts 19 years after ours, so we're really lucky that we have a whole complete set. We don't have to send out the official town set to be digitized, so we won't be losing it, or, you know, risking anything. And all of this is free. And then, once it's digitized, it will be up online, and we'll get a hard drive with the content, but it'll be available online, again, at no cost to the town. So unfortunately, the one thing I know people are gonna ask about the Digital Commonwealth is, no, they don't digitize newspapers. You know, must be additional cost to trying to get the different format sizes and all. So, but this is a great thing. We're also starting the process to upload previously digitized material from CPC. We have three historic newspapers, I know Cemetery has some, and again, that's another free method to do that. It's something the town's never been able to do, because we don't host our own webpage, so we don't have the server and the storage capacity for that. So I'll come back and give you more info on that when we get a little further along and have more to announce, but all in all, really good news on historic preservation in town.
Thank you, Ginny.
Following Ginny, I also have good news and happy to announce, pending the board's approval, that we will be bringing back the fireworks to Harwich Cranberry Festival. The chamber is very fortunate to have some wonderful, wonderful sponsors, so look forward to hearing from you guys later.
Great, what's the date on that?
That is Saturday, September 16th.
Thank you. And the time, rough time that they're gonna be set up?
About eight o'clock.
Okay.
Right after crayon jam.
And I think I followed an email chain where Deputy Chief David LeBlanc and Lieutenant Consonine were gonna reach out to Pine Oaks and some of the other--
Yes, they're reaching out to Pine Oaks Phase III, as well as putting together all of the no parking on Harwood, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment and announcement? Moving on to the consent agenda, Larry, we are gonna pull for a separate discussion C and G.
I also, I kinda think this was supposed to be Brooks Academy, Peggy on cue. I think that was supposed to be Brooks Academy, but I'm not positive. I know, so I wanna ask. Should I go ask her?
Yeah, I will start, Mr. Chair. This becomes a contest every week, it's the longer consent agenda, so.
We're also removing, just before you go any further, we're moving in how wastewater implementation committee appointment, pending, we're going to have a new charge for the wastewater implementation committee. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move, A, approve the minutes Monday, July, of Monday, July 3rd, 2017, regular session. B, approve proclamation request from the Samaritans on Cape Cod and the islands, and authorize a chair to sign for the board. We decided to hold C for now. D, approve and authorize chair to sign contract with RISE Engineering for condensing boilers for fire station. E, confirm appointment of Carleen Jones as administrative assistant for the assessing department effective on or before September 1, 2017. F, confirm the appointment of Megan Eldridge, Eldridge, as health director effective September 1, 2017. We'll hold G. H, approve the Chamber of Commerce request to have fireworks during the Cranberry Festival to be held on September 16, 2017. I, approve request by National MS Society for Charity Walk on September 8, 2017. J, approve and authorize a chair to sign the local update of census addresses operation. K, approve the recommendation of Chief Gilman to offer Charles Brooks a conditional offer of employment as a full-time police officer for the Harwich Police Department. L, accept the resignation of Franco Previd as full member of the zoning board of appeals. M, accept the resignation of Paul Doan as a member of the Cemetery Commission. N, accept the resignation of Peter DeBacher as a member of the planning board. O, appoint Catherine Galdat as assistant registrar per request of the town clerk. P, appoint Elaine Dickinson as an additional election officer per the request of the Democratic Town Committee. Q, approve the amendment, amended term of Peggy Rose from January 30th, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, as a member of the Boulder Information Committee. This allows us to keep the staggered terms in place. Is that okay?
It's actually the Brooks Academy, there's a typo there.
Okay, the Brooks Academy, excuse me. R, approve the following new full member appointments. Linda Subula, Traffic Safety Committee, term ending June 19, 2019. Matt Hart, Disability Rights, term ending June 2020. Karen Larson, Disability Rights, also June 2019. Taylor Mills, Disability Rights, June 2019. Gary Miller, Disability Rights, June of 2020. Deborah Miller, Brooks Academy Museum Commission, of June 2020. David Spitz, Brooks Academy Museum Commission, June 2019. Mark Coleman, Agricultural Commission, June of the year 2020. Barry Worth, Utility and Energy Commission, June 2020. Stephen Connor, Cemetery Commission, June of 2020. Heather Bolender, Treasure Chest Committee, June 2019. Leo Kakounis, Kakounis, June 2020. Constable, that's why I said. And we, as mentioned, we will hold Ann Howell. And Mary Mizlowski, Planning Board, and also the Housing Committee, excuse me, the Planning Board will end of June 2018. She is also appointed a full member of the Housing Committee, term ending June 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, any discussion?
Just, if I may, just one comment while Cindy's here. You asked about getting Pine Oaks, maybe just announce what the proposed location is for the, for the fireworks, so people will know that?
For the viewing?
The viewing is behind the community center, as the Cranberry Festival this year has a new home behind the community center, where everything will take place.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just wanted to highlight Megan Eldridge, she changed her name recently, but she's been the longtime assistant, and she has now been an applicant, and we've accepted her as the replacement for Paula Champagne, and hopefully that she's had about 18 years of experience, and Paula was here for 30-something, so I don't know if we ask her that much for 30-something years, but hopefully we get a good long run out of her, and it's nice to see a internal promotion as well, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you, Megan. Any other discussion? Is there anyone here from Samaritans on Cape Cod to accept the proclamation? I just wanted to publicly, publicly thank that organization for all the work that they do. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Chris, on the approve the proposed VNA contract, the dates on the contract are last year's dates, and I'd like to go through that contract with you.
Yeah, we can get that updated.
Yeah.
I think with the new, the new, the new director too of the Health Department, we can certainly, we've had a discussion before about what our town nurse does, and what VNA does, and is there any overlap?
I'd like to have that discussion again at a meeting, because the rates on the bottom of this are, to me anyway, a little, a little on the high side. And then on the, on G, approve and authorize chair to sign the representation letter regarding the audit of financial statements. I read through that, that's a 44-point recognition that the board's making. Most of that stuff in there, we have nothing to do with. So I'd like to go through with you and the finance director before I sign it, what we're signing.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine.
And that is it for the consent agenda. So moving on to public hearings and presentation, first tonight, we have the update on the Cape Cod School Building Project with Bob Sanborn. Good evening, Bob.
All right. Just gotta find it on here for you.
Bob?
Yep.
There it is.
Oh, they're on the bottom.
It's on the bottom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was too easy.
We run a good ship here.
I see that, as always, as always. Thank you for the invitation, and we're coming to the end of our process, and I don't wanna tell you where we are, if that's okay. I wanna, my, my job today is thank yous, why invest in Cape Cod Tech, and not only for the board, but for those people in the audience, and also maybe viewers as well, as we approach the vote in October. A little history for the, for people who may not have checked in on the project as of yet, the financial impact specifically for Harwich, the reimbursement rate, and then also the debt schedule, and then the mechanics of the vote, which it's a very particular way of going about approving the debt, if, if, if so choosing. So first, a thank you to our 25-member school building committee. As you look down this list, first, I want to publicly thank Chris for serving on that building committee, but you see several sitting town managers, former town managers, finance people from various towns. We have three architects on this committee, you see several staff members, including myself, and, and, and our, and our school, school committee chairman is also on that. It's been a lot of work, a lot of volunteer time, and we know that in towns and on all of, all the committees, it's difficult to get people, and I think we've put together a very quality committee in assessing the right path for vocational technical education going into the next 50 years. I also want to thank Lee Culver and Bob Vertato of our school committee, who are in attendance this evening in the back there. And I already thanked Chris for, for the school building committee, but also Lee Culver again, and I regretted to mention public safety, a big aspect of the school building committee, and Lee and Bruce Young more than cover that for the town of Harwich and for the school. So just briefly, there was a, a study done by the MS School Building Authority, you're gonna hear that acronym many times, the MSBA. It was with Northeastern University from Barry Bluestone, who lives in Wellfleet, actually, and it looked at the jobs that our vocational technical school trains kids in, but also all the vocational technical schools across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And they saw that 1.2 million jobs would, would be needed going through just 2022 in job growth, but also replacement workers, which is a huge issue. And one thing about a Boston report, typically don't mention the Cape, but in this case they did. They specifically mentioned that the Cape and Islands was in desperate need of these new jobs and these replacement workers as we go into the next 20 to 30 years. And I just want to mention one other thing about the skills gap. The skills gap everybody should be aware of is the fact that the average age, for example, of an electrician is 58 years old. Now, we trade, just think about, that's the reason for the replacement workers. Might grow from dirty jobs is, is hot on this issue of the skills gap, but it's in many of the programs that we offer at Cape Cod Tech that are pivotal to the economy down here. For example, in healthcare, for example, in the trades, which we have HVAC, electrical plumbing, carpentry, just to name a few, but also culinary, we know the hospitality industry is large down here, cosmetology, and the like. The service industry, I don't see it going away on Cape Cod, and we are one of the solutions to providing the current and future workforce. I give a snapshot of, of the enrollment for Harwich over the last several years, relatively stable, but about 77 students this, this coming year for October 1, 2016, which will be the fiscal year 2018, so 12.4. I mention this because capital costs are assigned via enrollment percentage, so that's, that's key to, one fact to understand. And that is by our regional agreement, and it's done on an annual basis. So if this project were to go forward with an affirmative vote in October, it would be, every year, we would look at the enrollment percentage for that year to, to assign the capital costs. So a brief history, this has been a four-to-five-year endeavor to get a partnership with the MS School Building Authority, because we knew that this project would be expensive to rebuild, renovate, or build new, a, a new vocational technical high school. Four years, we failed with trying to get a partner. And then, we had a legislative breakfast at our school, the MS, lo and behold, the MSBA showed up quite soon after that. Not that they're influenced by politics at all, they're quasi-governmental agency. In October, they came to do a senior study at our school, and that's when I called the town managers in in November of 2014 to say, I think we're gonna finally get in the program. Years prior, we'd been coming to boards like this, talking about the state of our facility, if you recall, but this was saying, okay, I think the MSBA's gonna bring us in, and in January, they did. January of 2015 started this breakneck speed of meeting all the timetables stepped, put out forward by the MS School Building Authority. We brought into their core program, and the core program looks at the building from top to bottom, okay? And we went into eligibility first, which was getting our team together, which is getting a school building committee, which I've already shared with you, which I think we've done a fantastic job of putting together, a really strong group. We, we, we decided on a design enrollment of 650 students, and we submitted our maintenance and capital plans. I'm happy to say, although I'm not happy with the reimbursement rate from the MSBA overall, that we did get 1.25 out of 2 points for our maintenance and capital planning, which I think some have said, well, why are you here today if your capital planning was so good? We have now outstripped our ability of our capital plan, and this was the, this was the message in those intervening years, saying that we can no longer, with our capital allotment and our operating budget, keep up with the, with the things that need to be fixed in the school. And also for those in the audience and on TV, we've never come, come to the towns for any additional capital funds except in this manner, and so I'll go forward. We were brought into feasibility, and we finished our team with bringing on an owners' project manager, Colliers International, and an architect, Drummy Rosane and Anderson. And then we brought in, at a suggestion of my colleague in, in the Worcester area, said, bring in the town clerks, because if you're going Chapter 7116N, which I'll explain, you're gonna need the town clerk's help. And they have been invaluable to this process. We brought them in the first time in April of 2016, talked about Chapter 7116N, which I'll go into more, but that's what's in our regional agreement, that's how we have to go about getting authorization to borrow, for example, for a project like this. It's how our district was formed. We also determined the election time, which is October 24th, from 12 to 8, 12 noon to 8, in, at night. So our, our building committee during feasibility looked at several options, which I'll share with you in a minute and go through quickly, but they chose a preferred solution on November 30th, which I shared with this committee previously. The MSBA, we submitted that January 4th, on the 15th, they approved it, and then on April 11th, we brought the town clerks in with bond counsel to give them a sense of what the ballot may look like, and resolve any unresolved questions. And then we submitted the schematic design for that new facility to the east side of our current facility. But I mean, I'm gonna step back in a minute to talk about how we got to that point for people who haven't really been looking at this up till now. On August 23rd, there's three more things that are really pivotable, pivotal. August 23rd, the MSBA will approve our project scope and budget, and then on October, I'm not, sorry, August 24th, the school committee will call for a vote by signing a warrant that would go to the town clerks. At that time, also a ballot, a sample ballot will be sent to each of the town clerks. And then, we have a two-month communication effort, including nights like this, where we will be getting the word out for the October 24th vote. I do want to step back, how did we get to that new facility? We did not enter this core program with the MSBA thinking of a new facility. We thought, I thought, in particular, that it would be a reconstruction or a renovation. But as you see, and I shared the last time I was here, there were three renovations looked at by that school building committee, and four, three new constructions. There were really four, but one was eliminated right away, because it was sitting on our septic system. So the first was a renovation only, which was taking, within the square footage, just renovating that. And it was estimated at the time, as you see in the far right, at $123 to $125 million. The ad reno, the second one was a, a big addition, a small addition, I should say, off the front of our building, and also a full renovation of the facility. The next one ripped the face off our building, and, and did a renovation, and added a big addition and renovation. The problem with all three of those, and it was one of the criteria that the building committee looked at, was they would take four years to complete, and would be a significant disruption to the educational process, not to mention a significant disruption to the, to the enrollment of our school. Because we are an application school, students choose to go to us, would they go to us if the place was being ripped apart for four years? So, we also looked at three new construction ideas, which I'll cover in a minute, all in the varying between 140 and 146 million. These were estimates of the time, this is in the middle of feasibility, and this, this was towards the end of feasibility, but still, they were unknowns, but these were the estimates at the time. So for the new construction, the C2 was the obvious answer, because C4, to the left, was on the septic system, as I've already said. C3 was near a residential neighborhood that's right behind the school, so that was a criteria that the school building committee was looking at. And then C1 lies quite low on our property, and also would be on our current football field. So for new construction, C2 was the obvious choice. The other issue with this is that it would take two to two and a half years to build. You could build the, the new facility while the old facility was running, there would be no disruption to education, less of an impact on enrollment. But the issue is cost. You see--
I, excuse me, Rob, but since you have this picture up--
Yes.
I'm trying to remember, at one time, did we have concern about runoff into this pond at the lower right-hand side?
Right in here, Larry?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of that, but I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
Okay. So anyways, just going back to cost, the only, only option that was really, you know, lesser in cost was the 123 to 125, the reno only, significantly, as I've said, significant interruption to, to education. So I'll get to that in a second, but the, the building would sit on the property like this, and the, and then the current facility would ultimately be destroyed, demolished. There are significant abatement issues and hazardous material issues with taking that building down and away, so it has to be done in a, in a very specific way. Also, that was another thing that the school building committee was looking at when looking at renovations, there would be significant costs with hazardous materials, because of asbestos. Another thing that they looked at is the entire, on a renovation, just to finish up on renovation, the entire brickwork around the building, and if you've been to our building, it's wrapped in brick. It's porous, it has been drinking in water for 43 years. Actually, look back at some school committee minutes, and they were looking at those bricks back in the 80s, that, that the porosity of, of that brick was of particular concern. So that building would have been, had to have been completely re-wrapped, as well as all the windows and all the doors, which would have happened in any renovation. And then, all the ADA compliance and code compliance issues, a tremendous amount of money would have been spent on renovation that had nothing to do with education or improving the school in any way, other than bringing it up to the codes. So I'm just gonna, just quickly, this is our current enrollment for the school, this is 623 students, with Barnstable the most. Once again, that's because capital costs are allotted in that manner. But this is where we are. We're at a project cost of $127,946,000. That is now falling into that price range of those, that reno only that I showed a couple slides ago. I think that the school building committee made the right choice, it was a unanimous choice, to go with new, because the cost, which was the second educational plan and vision and opportunities was number one on the school buildings committee, but right after that was cost. And we are now in a cost band that almost made it a no-brainer renovation versus new. You see, the, the published reimbursement rate is 45.45%. I've continued to try to fight for extra percentage points, but that fight is almost lost. I've talked to you previously about the economically disadvantaged number of students we have, which has gone up since we've gone into this program, and currently, we are not being recognized for that. I had our legislative, look for legislative solutions to that, that was, was unsuccessful to, to this point. Continue to fight the good fight on that, but that's the published rate. The effective rate is gonna be around 32 to 33%, and I'll explain why. The district share in this scenario is around $86 million. And for the town of Harwich, that would be an impact of 14 cents per thousand on home value, and with an average home value that I pulled from the Division of Local Services for Harwich, that's about a $66.51 impact on the tax rate over the 30 years, every year, at 5%. People have asked me, is 30 years set in stone? No, it's for illustrative purposes at this time. If there are more advantageous ways to go about financing this, meaning just restricting the years, and, and we can get agreement upon that from the towns, then we will do so in consultation with First Southwest, our financial advisors. We have a 5% interest rate in this number you're looking at right now. That's still very conservative. If we were to go out today, they tell us we'd be at about 3 and 1/4. If, but we will not be borrowing for, if approved, we will not be borrowing for another year or two. And in the beginning, it'll be short-term borrowing, I'm told. If you've looked at the, some of the, some of the debt schedules, the beginning year has a very, a smaller number, and that's because of some short-term borrowing for cash flow in the beginning of the project before it's up and running. So, the debt schedule that I refer to in 2020, these timing, this timing could be a little altered, but this is for illustrative purposes at this time. You see, it's a smaller impact in that first year for the reasons I said, and it's about a $684,000 impact when the full amount. Now, what's in this number? There's a tremendous amount, still a tremendous amount of contingencies, there's escalation costs and inflation costs built into that, furniture fixture and equipment is in, inside this number, and so is the site costs, it's basically every cost associated with the project. We're not touching much of, of our fields, although we will gain two fields as a part of this project, but the fields around that, around the perimeter are not being touched except for the track. We're not touching much of our fields, although we will gain two fields as a part of this project, but the fields around the perimeter are not being touched except for the track, which is currently just a road. So in the debt service there, you're looking at both principal and interest in this case, and you see the 14 cents per thousand that's over on the, that I've already talked about. So I'm going to stop there for a second about the, because I want to go into the vote real quick. But I did want to say, going back to this, that the 32% reimbursement rate is concerning, but unavoidable. The construction market has ballooned. We are in a very high construction market, and the MSBA reimburses at $326 a square foot, and they just raised that from $314, which gained us a little bit in the process. But this is estimated, once it's completed and we go out to bid, to be about $472 per square foot because of the state of the construction market. That delta between 472 and 326 does not get any reimbursement. That's why the published rate and the effective rate are significantly different. They also have caps, you may be familiar with, at Monomoy on site costs at 8% of the construction costs. That is contributing to the delta between the reimbursement rate published and the effective, and finally furniture fixtures and equipment. They give us $2,400 a student like any traditional high school, and we're a vocational technical high school with 15 programs. We go over significantly on furniture fixtures and equipment, about 1.7 million over that, and that's not reimbursable in these numbers as well. So you will see 45 as a published rate, but effectively it's around 32 to 33. So the vote, my final slide is about the vote. It's on October 24th from 12 to 8, as I've said, and it's because it's in our regional agreement, and the law allows for only eight hours of voting. I mean, you can do it as little as four. We chose eight, have the maximum amount of hours that would conform to our regional agreement in this law. And then we've paid, we are paying for the expenses through our FY '18 budget that you supported in this last year. We're working in consultation with the town clerks. They will be invoicing us. They will handle all the ballots, because there's a lot of intricacies with that, and we do have another meeting with the town clerks on September 7th. So that is the end of my formal remarks, so I'd open it up to questions.
Great, thank you, Bob. Larry?
Just a comment first. I liked your discussion on the skills gap. I read some articles recently that kind of related to that, that the country and the location that gets the most number of workers wins going forward because we're short. And the second article was that we talk about economic growth of 4%, 5%, and limiting factors, again, people. We talked about a lot of different things, so that's critical. You answered my question on the equipment, because I was wondering, obviously, tech school is very expensive to run, and I was hoping they would pay for more of the, you know, what you do for car mechanics, but they're not. There's no way we can, there's no influence on that then?
No, the 2,400 per student is what, we pushed on that with the team. We thought there might be a chance, but no. And that's leaving, as I said, $1.7 million on the table that we have to fund to properly equip the building, but not get reimbursement on.
Okay. I assume this will come up later, but I did catch the tail end of the radio show you're on this morning.
Oh, yeah.
And there was a lot of, I don't know, a lot, but concern about meshing our local vote with the school vote. We have different hours and all that, and I assume we'll talk about it so that makes sense when we go forward.
I'd like to comment, but whenever is appropriate?
Yeah. Not upset.
I don't have anything.
So obviously, I've dedicated a lot of time after hours to going over, so I think this is a very, very important project for the community to give consideration to. Unfortunately, sometimes in state law, they have certain ways that you do things, and there's no real wiggle room. So we have kind of explored to see, and I believe there is no wiggle room, that one of the things that you see is the vote that will occur on the 24th is simply the vote to authorize for the project to go forward. What it doesn't do is that there are towns, and I know Barnstable has already made a decision on this, that there are towns that, we are in this boat, that do not have an extra $685,000 sitting around to make this payment. So as the administrator, you know, it's my responsibility to make sure we lay out a reasonable plan for the community going forward and to make those recommendations to you. So I have been in touch, I know our attorney's been in touch with bond counsel for the school, and what they've come up with, and I would like to have John Giorgio come out at the next board meeting to kind of walk the board through, but we can do a debt exclusion vote on the same day. It would be two ballots. We can do it the same eight hours. We're not restricted in terms of that, so we could do the same eight hours. And my concern is that in this, as you see the numbers, the voters could vote this in October of 2017, and we don't have to commence paying for this in a significant way until 2021. I don't want to use a, you know, it's something that's going to sneak up on us. And I don't think that's a responsible way to do it. I think that myself, my two cents here is what you pay me for, is that if you have two ballots on the same day, it makes sense that someone knows, okay, we're giving forward a project that we know the school needs to be done. And in the town of Harwich's case, and I think this is going to be somewhat unique to each community because some communities have a bigger nut than others in terms of that, so have a bigger financial impact. But in our case, I think if we ask the voters, okay, if you approve the school, will you also approve the debt exclusion that goes with that? And normally, like on the, when we did our project, it was a ballot question. People know, okay, we're paying for the school, we're doing it as a debt exclusion, you could do it all as one. Here, we don't have that opportunity because of state law. But I think that to make sure that when our assessment comes in two or three years from now, and it goes from 1.3 to up to $2 million, that we don't have sticker shock, that if we have the provision where the ballots, the two ballots, people can vote, now we'll have that provision. And, you know, this isn't no smoke and mirrors. I mean, what Bob said, it's going to be an increase of $66 to the average home in Harwich. So there has to be a decision. But I think to vote on a school and then wait two years to decide how we're going to pay for it doesn't make a lot of sense in my mind. So I have asked John Giorgio to prepare the form of a ballot question, so we have that material that would go on there. And we would not expect the tech school to pay for that. That's a local concern, but there would be some cost savings because we don't have to pay the police officers twice. Certain things we won't have double the cost, so it should be a little bit more inexpensive for us. Another concern that was raised that we may have to go to town meeting, do a town meeting, and then a town election, and I asked the attorney to look at that. And again, because it's an assessment, that we are allowed to do the ballot vote, so that way, when the bill comes due in two years, we would have the financial ability to make our payment. So I would ask the board to give some consideration of that. September 19th, I think, is our date in which a final decision needs to be made. So we only have really two meetings before that decision has to be made. But if we can have a discussion on September 5th, I think it'd be worthwhile. But I have sat through the presentation numerous times, and I think it definitely is a worthwhile project. And one of the things that I see, you walk through that school, and when the school was built in the 70s, I mean, it had a certain finance, a certain education plan. Those have all changed, and, you know, building a new school is really to make sure that we can capture the idea of the new larger-sized classrooms, the technology elements that new classrooms offer. And I think it makes a lot of sense that this project needs to go forward. My concern is that we just need to be responsible about how we pay for it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris.
If I could just make a quick comment on that? I didn't know that you could do the 12 to 8. That's, my main reason for saying confusion was the hours issue. So I certainly understand that this is not a small expense. And in no way, as I've said, for Barnstable, because they're having their vote before our vote, we do not want this project in any way, if at all possible, to affect town services. It's a once-in-43-year ask, and we hope you see the value. I always feel as though, when I come to Harwich, and I work in Harwich, that you do see the value of our school, and I hope for your support.
Larry?
Bob, very briefly, we don't take much time, but...
Sure.
What's your planned outreach to inform voters on this, especially those that aren't paying attention?
Yeah, the, well, first, you heard it today. I was on XDK today. I got a lot of work to do in Barnstable because I'm going to have to do some front-end work in Barnstable because of their September 19th vote. But I'm booked, I'm getting booked almost every day at a village, you know, a civic association or... And my offer to you is I'll come to Harwich, not a long ride for me, in any venue. I do see us having three to four workshops throughout the district with our team, the architect and the OPM, but also I'd be happy to, I was at a Rotary meeting in the morning last week, and groups like that. I welcome the opportunity to give a presentation similar to this so that they understand the importance of this project.
Thank you, Bob. Your presentation was as clear as always.
Thank you.
It is a very important project.
Could I just ask one more thing?
Go ahead.
Okay. And I understand that you are under no obligation to grant this request, but I'll ask humbly if you feel, if this board were to feel as though they could endorse in principle this project with the, even with the caveats about what the town manager said earlier, I'd greatly appreciate it. We've been able to get boards of selectmen from seven different towns now, and if this board felt they could do that, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Bob. I'm going to hold on that until September 5th, when we have a full board.
Very good.
But we'll put this back on for September 5th.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say one thing that's not here, you know, about this presentation, but I was impressed, I heard on the radio and went home and Googled it immediately this summer about the middle school offerings for the camps that you had this summer.
Yes.
I thought that was really great, and it was a great way to reach the younger students, potential students for, and unfortunately, my daughter was already signed up for things. So next year, I know that I'm going to contact you in March, when all the other camps are looking for money.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. We might have to raise the price a little bit.
That's okay.
We were pretty, pretty good bargained.
Was it well attended?
Yeah, not bad. We had about 100, 150 students over those two weeks. And yeah, we have to come up with very unique ways to get the word out to the younger kids of what we have to offer.
I think that was really great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a Hazard Mitigation Plan presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members and the public. It is my great pleasure to introduce to you Martha Hevener from the Cape Cod Commission. She's a planner who has been helping the Hazard Mitigation Plan working team to finalize the update of the 2011 Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a very important plan for the community as it makes us eligible to continue to get FEMA and MEMA funding for different projects and also reimbursements after storms. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Martha, who's going to run through a PowerPoint, and together we'll hopefully be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Martha Hevener. I'm a planner at the Cape Cod Commission, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the project team. I have, I'm only one of several people who worked on the project, and I noticed that in addition to Charlene, there are some other members of the project team here tonight who I hope we can answer together any questions you might have. Before I get started on the presentation, it occurred to me while I was sitting in the audience that there may be some people who are unfamiliar with the Hazard Mitigation Plan and may be wondering, what is a Hazard Mitigation Plan and why are we doing it? Well, a Hazard Mitigation Plan is a long-term, sustainable strategy for a community to reduce loss from natural hazards. And when I say loss, I mean both property damage and loss of human life. And so why are we doing it? Charlene noted that having a Hazard Mitigation Plan enables a community to be eligible to receive MEMA, types of MEMA and FEMA funding. And also, I don't want people to forget that having a Hazard Mitigation Plan and reducing loss of life and loss of property is important in and of itself. So, so in terms of the planning process, people on the project team may remember that this project actually got started back in 2014. And they, we had some changes in staff, both in the town and at the Cape Cod Commission, and so it went on a little bit of a hiatus. And back in 2015 and 2016, the bulk of the work was done by the project team, and here we are in front of you in 2017 with a completed draft plan. The project had, was led by a planning team, an interdisciplinary planning team composed primarily of Town of Harwich staff. And help me out if I forgot people, but I believe we've got conservation, natural resources, health, of course, police and fire and emergency management, water, harbor, DPW harbor, and a few other, and planning and administration, of course. And so that was the, I want to emphasize that this is a local plan in the sense that the contents of the plan really came from, both from the public comments that we got and also from the town staff. Cape Cod Commission staff's role was to provide a technical assistance and also help facilitate the project meetings. Public outreach was an important part of the plan. The primary tool for our public outreach was to provide an online survey that was circulated both on the town website and also through social media. We used a survey to get uptake on the type of hazards that people have experienced in Harwich, and also what their thoughts might be for potential mitigation actions. And I do have to sort of congratulate Harwich in that we had the best response from Harwich, better than all the other towns in terms of our survey outreach. We got over 1,100 responses, so that was quite encouraging when we were doing the plan. So Chapter 2, so that was Chapter 1 process. Chapter 2 is where we get into the natural hazards. And it begins with profiles and assessments of a list of about 16 natural hazards that we got from the state, the 2013 Massachusetts Hazard Mitigation Hazard Plan. And you can see, there's a long list of hazards, and... That's okay. Okay. Okay, so that's the range, and if you go on, that's okay. If you go on to the next slide, you'll see that what the project team did was then narrowed down, narrowed down the types of hazards that we're looking at, and we created, we ranked the probability of the likeliness of future events happening. So based on historical data of occurrences, both in Harwich and in the region, and on local knowledge, the project team ranked the hazards in terms of whether one would be highly likely to occur, likely to occur, possible or unlikely. And you can see from there, the hazards that the project team deemed as highly likely were coastal erosion, flood, nor'easters, high winds, hurricane, tropical storm, sea level rise, and severe winter weather. Great, so that was Chapter 2, dealing with the actual hazards. Chapter 3 is where we put together an asset inventory, and that looks at what assets are there in the town that could be vulnerable to natural hazards. That includes people, looking at the numbers of both summer population and year-round population, so we have a good idea about how many people we are dealing with that could be affected. We looked at the natural environment, and we also looked at the built environment. And by built environment, what I mean is we looked at both the numbers of residences and types of businesses and their values, so we would understand the impact should they be hit by a particular hazard. And that asset inventory also included critical facilities. And what we talk about, when we talk about critical facilities, we're looking at essential facilities such as, the facilities that the town needs both on a day-to-day function and after an emergency or after a hazard, such as town hall, community center, schools, Fontaine Medical Center, et cetera. The critical facilities also includes your lifeline utilities, and that would be things like the water system, electric substations, communication systems such as cell towers. And it also includes transportation systems, that would be your roads, harbor, and other types of transportation provisions. So Chapter 4, I believe we're on now, is where we're at, the vulnerability analysis. And what that does is take the information that we got about the hazards, that's in Chapter 2, and combine that with the asset inventory that we got in Chapter 3, and we mapped the... And we mapped the location of where hazards, the hazard data shows hazards occurring. And those hazards, the data that we had were related to sea level rise, storm surge, and floods. Maped that data, then mapped the locations of the assets and the critical facilities, and saw where they overlaid. And that gave us an idea about where the vulnerability area, the vulnerable areas are. And the good news, in summary, I will say that most of Harwich's critical facilities are outside of a vulnerable area. So that, that was a positive thing to see. So the next chapter then focuses on the mitigation strategy. We have the information, we know what's vulnerable, and how are we going to address it? The chapter provides a set of seven broad goals that are all aimed at reducing potential loss of, of life and property. We also looked at the previous mitigations from the 2011 plan and evaluated them to see what's working, what isn't, what we want to continue with. We also looked at coming up with new mitigation actions. And the chapter also discusses the town's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program and how it will maintain its agreement to manage activities within the floodplain. So the types of mitigations, mitigation actions that are in the plan could be categorized in about four or five different categories. Some actions pertain to infrastructure. That might be replacing and repairing pilings and docks at Sacquetucket Harbor. There's a category of outreach actions. And that may include providing public workshops to property owners and residents in vulnerable areas or to builders, for example. There are planning actions. Planning action may include keeping an inventory of the vulnerable assets and developing, considering and developing mitigation strategies around to protect them. And finally, there's preparedness actions. And that might include additional beach nourishment, I suppose which could also be considered an infrastructure action. It also includes looking at the, the emergency management equipment, emergency management provisions that the town has, understanding what, what future needs might be. So the next chapter, so that's sort of the, the key information about what's, what's gone on so far into the plan. And the next chapter looks at how are we going to keep the plan current and, and aid its implementation? The, the strategy includes an annual evaluation of the plan to see that, see what's working, see how, how the town's doing on those actions. And then that prepares the town for another update in five years, where, you know, taking stock of what's working and what isn't, and also what's, maybe what's happened in the natural world around those hazards and, and updating the plan. So finally, I think this is the exciting part, the, the plan adoption, which is why we're here tonight to sort of get that, that moving. We're looking for the Board of Selectmen to, to approve this plan for its initial submittal to FEMA and MEMA. What will happen then is that those agencies will review the plan. They will get back to us with comments. And our experience has been that they do have comments on some suggestions that they'd like to see, some changes and, and other considerations. At that point, we would make those changes, resubmit the plan, have the town then adopt the final plan, and then we would resubmit that back to this, to FEMA and MEMA. So it's a little bit longer process than, than one might think. That's, that's the overall picture of what's in the plan. I wanted to note that we presented the plan. There's a link to it on the town website, also on the Cape Cod Commission website, and put it out for a fourteen-day public comment period. Wanted to let you know about two comments that will also include in the, in the final version of the plan. One is from a Harwich resident who expressed concerns about what would happen. Is the town prepared for failure to the power grid? He's concerned that there could be, that could be catastrophic. And my suggestion might be that that might be something that would be dealt with in an emergency preparedness plan or emergency response plan. But I think it's a valid comment and, and important to think about. We also got comments from Shannon Jarboe, who is with Barnstable County Extension. She is the CRS or Community Rating Specialist. And she gave us some tips for, suggestions for beefing up the plan, including some additional language to help the town get a higher rating in the CRS. So we're gonna make some changes and, and add them. And you'll get another look at the plan before it's finished. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I think Charlene and other members of the project team would be happy to take any questions.
Great. Anything to add, Charlene, or you?
No, we, we, if at all possible this evening, we could use a vote, a vote of the board to authorize the plan so we can move it forward to MEMA and FEMA. Because a number of the plans were delayed, MEMA and FEMA gave extensions, and we're nearing the end of that extension. So we are kind of eager to get this going if we can. And Martha has just been really the mover and shaker of getting this project done. The town staff did a lot of work, but she did, she really got it to where it is. And, and we're very grateful to, to her and the commission.
Thank you, Martha. Janelle, any questions?
I haven't read the plan. This is the one that's online, not in our packet, or haven't read it. So I can't vote on it tonight, I'm sorry.
Larry?
Okay. I was going to move so we get for a discussion. I have, on the, on the depth of the plan, what's the follow-up action on this? For instance, some of these, taking just, taking the inventory, it's gonna take some manpower and expenses. Is the Cape Cod Commission gonna help us with a, you know, database? We can, you know, format that to, to go forward? You know, I see Lee is, is out there, Lee Culver. But in terms of emergency equipment, you know, somebody has to make a, a listing and assessment of how good it is, what we need to purchase in the future. Does part of the plan to, pardon?
The answer, the answer was we do that on a yearly basis.
Right.
Lee Culver's in the back. Next time, Lee, I'll have you standing.
But my point remains the same, though. We need to have a database that has all that ongoing and a lot of different, that's just an example. A lot, I don't know how that carries on. My second, that's one question I have. You mentioned CRS. Has this plan been, or will be submitted to insurance companies to see what, what, what their judgment is since they have a lot of experience in this as well, I would think?
It's been my experience, this is actually the second plan that I've been involved with. Generally, it doesn't go to the insurance companies because it's, FEMA is the umbrella of all the flood insurance program. It's a federally funded program. It's, the insurance companies really don't have a lot to do with any of the FEMA and CRS that goes on. They
I guess my point is, is that
It's a federal program.
I guess my point is, is they, they, they have a lot of experience that might point out additional concerns. You know, that's their business. And so that might be interesting input.
They did have the opportunity to, to comment, and they still would have opportunity to comment?
Chris, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I, I think, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman. I did participate in some of the earlier levels and we had staff meetings. And, you know, one of the things I think it's important as an organization is just to make sure that we identify and understand what the, the risks are and then what the assets are for how we meet that. And I know going around a couple of the meetings, we had literally all the department heads or that were relevant to emergency management. And, you know, I was very impressed that we, we have that level. I, I do think too, just, I don't know what the timeline is for when it needs to be submitted, but I, I would encourage the board to, to seriously think about submitting this for tonight. But, you know, I, my last community, I, I came from a community where we had a tornado come through. And you don't know what emergency management is until you have an incident. And I was very proud that, you know, we, we worked well together in the previous town. And I think that the, the backbone and the departments that we have here, and more importantly, the high level of communication. And I think sitting around a table and understanding what our assets are and what the risks are gives us such a, a better opportunity to try to address those. So I, I think it is an important tool that, that we need. I think we should get that submitted so we get it under consideration because these, you know, federal agencies will still have additional concerns that they'll want to have addressed, I'm sure, before the plan is ultimately completed.
The, the plan needs to be finalized by December thirtieth. But that includes the comments from MEMA and FEMA. The latest that we really can get this out would be the first week in September. This is, is a huge document. It's over three hundred pages long.
I was very impressed with the plan. I did, did not read every line, but the depth of information in this plan is, is unbelievable, really. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to
I would, I, I would just, Julie, to, or Janelle, to your concern, I would move that, we're essentially looking at a draft plan. And that may not be, but I'd like to make that part of the motion so that might alleviate some of your concern for not looking at it. Having a chance to be online is a, I move, I move approval of the draft plan, of the draft Hazard Mitigation Plan for, for submittal to the state.
For further review.
To MEMA and FEMA?
To MEMA and FEMA, for, for their review.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Did the draft help you out?
No, just, and, and it's three hundred pages and summer's when I make my money, so I'm busy.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
This will be coming back once comments are received from MEMA and FEMA. This will be coming back to this board before the end of the calendar year. So you will have that opportunity again. Generally, the, the plan that I was involved in up in Truro, there were a number of comments received from MEMA and FEMA. Honestly, they weren't overly substantive at that point. There were more clarifications of information and that kind of thing. So when you have a chance, if you have a little insomnia, you know, this would be, you know, start reading it. I don't, I, I don't anticipate that comments received from those two agencies is gonna be, you know, substantive. There, there will be a lot of things that we may need to tweak here and there, but I don't think you're gonna see a lot of substantive changes in the plan.
No, we had quite a team that put this together. I don't imagine
The team that put this together was phenomenal, both previous staff who are, who have retired or moved on and current staff. It, it was really a pleasure working with everybody on this.
Thank you very much.
Just one, one comment, I mean, just a comment, you know, we, we have a lot of discussion about climate change and global warming that is directed to somewhere in the future. This is something we're doing here and now. So for me, from my mind, this is why it's so important.
Great. Thank you. Next up under Old Business is the Harwich Cultural Center, a general discussion on policy and operations. You know, we touched on this at the last meeting and I agreed to bring it back. Before we get started in that, I want to thank Carolyn again. I think that this project has been something that we voted to support. And it's something a few of us were behind last year. And, and you've exceeded my expectations. The building is full. The building is clean. The property looks good. You've done an outstanding job. And it, and by all accounts, it looks like it's been well received from the public. One of the comments that's been brought up and some questions that were asked were related to a few of the tenants. And Chris gave a, a kind of a brief explanation as to what we were trying to do in the beginning. And I think, you know, at least one member of the board wants to make sure that we continue to build what we originally set out to build, which would be a cultural and a civic center, and make sure that we're not doing any for-profit business in the building and, and to really give some thought to the tenants that are in there and make sure that the educational component stays with the building and what we're trying to build. With that, I'll open it up, questions, comments, and I'll start with Larry.
I, I'm waiting for Carolyn to, to talk, actually. I have no comments right now. I mean, I know Carolyn's working, well, let me change that expression, working very hard and doing a very good job. So I'll let you
Well, it's really not a Carolyn show. It's really an us show. So I brought her in basically so we could talk about policy and concern. So with that, I'll turn it over to Janelle.
Okay. So I think you're doing a great job, too. And we've got a waiting list, obviously very well received by the community. So now, my thought is to put some definitions down for this building. And there's also been talk about, oh, you maybe shouldn't call it a cultural center. Because we are continuing to use it as a municipal building with rec using it and other town entities, I think one of the things that we should really hone in on is the actual name. Should we continue to call it Harwich Cultural Center? Or should we throw in the word civic, which is my idea, Harwich Cultural and Civic Center? The emails that we were given about the Cape Cod Cultural Center being concerned that there would be confusion. I don't know about that, but I do know that we are different than them. I did have the opportunity to go to the Cultural Center of Cape Cod recently. And my daughter won a big raffle prize, so we got a free family membership for a year. It was great. But it's completely different than what we have created over here as a town. So I don't find that it is, it's apples and oranges in my book, really. The fact that we are continuing to offer civic things with the rec department and the other town entities, I think it's important that we throw the word civic in there and really differentiate it from a nonprofit organization in Yarmouth, where ours is a municipal organization putting something together. In addition, I did some Google search about the word cultural center after that email thread the other day. And what I found is mostly cultural centers are centers based upon a culture such as like the Italian Cultural Center, the Turkish Cultural Center. The fact that we have the Cape Verdean History Museum in there now, I think warrants the word cultural no matter what. And it's kind of more holistic in my mind because it's not just the arts, studio artists in there anymore. We've actually got a culture or, you know, with the, the front office there being housed with the Cape Verdean Museum. So that's my two cents about the name. And then as far as the use of the building, I just think it's important, this is filled up very rapidly. And we kind of have this, it's almost like cotton candy spinning on a, on a stick. It's kind of, it's going to get out of control if we don't put some definitions. And it is me, actually, that is the person that I think we should have maybe a percentage of the space or maybe certain amount of rooms that we dedicate to nonprofit, certain amount of rooms that we dedicate to education and that we dedicate to art of some sort. Because I don't want to lose the education aspect of that building at all. I think it's really important as well as the nonprofit. So those are my, my thoughts.
Chris?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I think one of the things that was a real challenge was to, to try to market that building. And you're trying to market it as a cultural center to differentiate from the community center, which is really one of the, the main reasons for the name. But to market it as a middle school was, was virtually impossible. So I, I think that's where we wanted to come up with the name. As I indicated, and, and I think, I, you know, I agree with the, the comment that we, we are trying to do something different. I have had an opportunity to go over and, and see the, the place in Yarmouth. It's very different than, than what we're trying to model here. They don't have a, a cultural museum like we have with the Cape Verdean population. You know, a name's in a name. From my standpoint, we have two years. My job is to fill it up and try to have it pay for itself as much as we can. At the end of two years, you know, if, if we want to give it a more formal name and, 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 you know, launch it once we get a, a better sense for who may be permanent or more permanent residents in it. I, I'm all fine with that. I have no problem at all. In terms of the issue about for-profit versus nonprofit, I think that the way the, the board had laid this out is that Carolyn does the applications and then she brings them to me. And, you know, I've been very attuned to the board's wishes. And there, you know, there has been no Kinko's or no obvious private type of operations that are in there, to my knowledge. I have gone through a couple of the walkthroughs, a couple of the open houses. And there is some sales that do occur. Artists generate a lot of material. And they want to try to sell off some of their inventory. But I think that that is more of a side element, or secondary element, and not a primary element. And then I guess two more points. One of the things that we've tried to do for the education, I agree a hundred percent. We have kept some of the rooms, the art room in particular, where we were trying to have day classes. So now that we have the, the monthly rentals kind of squared away, the next, the next hurdle, if you would, is to tackle the, the issue of how do we get the education components into that art room and try to rent that out on a, a daily basis. and try to rent that out on a daily basis to different folks. We did hire somebody, so we have somebody with two weeks on the job now, maybe three weeks on the job. So we've had some discussions. We are also turning our attention to the auditorium and to the cafeteria, to see, as well as the kitchen, to see how do we start to balance that building out and get some additional folks in there. So I think we are trying to adhere to the board's wishes. I know, Ms. Chairman, you had indicated about reactivating those two portable classrooms in the back. So I've given direction to get those back online, and we will market those two. Maybe those are two that we put more towards education components for people to be in there. So, you know, it is a work in process, and certainly we are trying to continue to be responsive to that. And, Ms. Chairman, I would be remiss if I didn't, Carolyn's done an outstanding job, but you talked about some of the other elements, and I know Sean Libby, who's in the crowd tonight, has really done yeoman's work of keeping a building that we have minimal funding for functional, and to take it from being a semi mothballed building to a functional building, and not have any additional resources allocated for that. He really has done an outstanding job, and when the alarm rings, it's either Carolyn or Sean that gets the alarms. And I know my Capitol Outlay Committee, when we went through the building, a couple wandered off and we had the police show up. So they definitely, the alarms definitely do work. But just to pass along those comments.
Thank you, Chris. Larry?
Yeah, since you asked, Mike, I'll make a comment. I've seen some other examples of a situation, not just like ours, but a little bit like ours, where you have a vacant building that has gone through a artist colony, if you will, initially, so to speak, to attract people and help the area out. And then that's progressed, progressed as they, as you get going into a, an aid to economic development in the area, to bringing in businesses to that area. And so from my perspective, and I know we're starting, that's why I was reluctant to bring this up. We're starting this discussion, and in that context, we're at the initial phase. And what I'd like to see then is, even though we're a year into a two-year, now a three-year period, I think we can already start thinking about, where's that going? How can we, you know, maybe part of it needs to be for profit, by the way. If it helps the economic development in the area, it'd be my two cents. And can we move that into, you know, a center in town that does both? And we should be thinking about that now. I was reluctant, because we've, you know, I know we're starting, and so I was reluctant to bring that up tonight, but I think we, now you bring it up, we should, we should be talking about that. And trying to get a plan in place with all, with all your experience now, Carolyn, you know, what types of things, where can we go? If that context is right, you know, starting from this phase, going to the next phase.
Correct.
Janelle?
So it's not zoned for profit, business profitable businesses? So I was thinking that maybe the library space could be used as a gallery and/or retail space, but that the town controls it, so that the artists...
A way to move forward, is what you're saying.
Right, so it's still part of the economic development of the area. And also, by the way, Harwich Port is becoming an art mecca. Another gallery is opening up on Cross Street, where Red River Printing was, is now an art gallery. And then one, our very first tenant, Georgine, owns an art gallery called Cross Rip Gallery across from CBS. So I think you're right on target with the economic development. But I do think that we, as a municipality, should get involved in the selling of the artists' wares, because it's not all paintings and whatnot, and run that library similarly to a gallery would. The Yarmouth Cultural Center does have their little retail space. They actually allow non-artists at the center to, or artisans to, it's juried, to sell wares there. So you can be an artist from Provincetown and not have a gallery space, I mean, a studio space there and still sell. So I think that would be a way to tie in the economic development and maybe, you know, generate a little bit more revenue for the building costs as well. And again, not only limit it to the people who are renting studio space there, but maybe, you know, jury it out again to other artists in the area, other craftspeople. Doesn't have to be art, per se, but it could be, I don't know, t-shirts or something, you know? So I think that's really great.
Well, last comment, I don't want to open up a debate here, but, because it's an important point that Janelle raises, and Cindy's here from the Chamber of Commerce. Over the years, we've always had some difficulty, if you will, of pulling the villages together into one Harwich. Because we do different things. And I think this is an opportunity with this cultural center, as you alluded to, to have that discussion broader than the, than the middle school, of how it fits into Harwich Port, you know, rest of Harwich as we go forward. And maybe, maybe we need to develop some group to talk about it. And I'll quit the debate.
Thank you. Carolyn, anything to add?
I will just say, I do have to thank Sean down here as well, as well as the rest of the highway department. They have maintained the outside of the building as well. But I did want to say that a lot of the ideas that you have brought forward is exactly what we're working on. Much to Sean's dismay, we've talked about removing some lockers to open up some additional space to hang things. So we have all that, that we'll present to you when we feel like we have all of the ducks in the row, so to speak, so that we have a comprehensive plan. We've put together the waitlist and how that will work, and looking at some creative space inside that we might be able to rent to people as well. Just because we don't want people on the waitlist, as long as it's going to be safe and accessible, we'll try and get everyone in. So we are working on all those things. The policies are moving forward, they are, it's a fluid situation, which is exactly what we wanted. I don't think any of us thought we'd be standing here talking about a waitlist to get in. All very exciting things. I concur with everything that you said. I think that some of the things that we'll do better is the phases that Chris talked about, the next component of getting more people into the spaces that aren't rented, the music room, the auditorium, the art rooms. And now that we have someone else on board, thank you, Erica, who will be able to market and go out and do some of that, so that the community center can stay a vibrant place as well. So we're excited about the opportunity, and I do thank all the people, because it's not a one-person show, it's all of you, and certainly the public and the tenants and everyone who comes through that building.
Thank you, Carolyn, I was going to suggest that maybe just a document that, kind of a where we are and where we're going, thank you. And as we get closer to the six-month mark, maybe we can do a presentation on...
Absolutely.
Where we're going with it. Thank you. That's it?
Thank you.
Great. Status of the Brooks Library Exterior Preservation Project. Chris, do you want to just give us a brief overview?
Yeah, I'll do an overview, and then I'll invite the library trustees and Sean to come up. We have had this project out to bid twice, and I think what we're coming to the conclusion on is that this is an extensive project. One component that I think is an important piece is, it's a preservation project, which means that the paint has to be taken off that's been put on over, over literally decades, and to get down to bare wood. I think some, too, in terms of some of the discussion, that we really have to do the work in a weather-sensitive element. We need certain temperatures at night, certain temperatures during the day, to make sure that when the building gets peeled back or gets taken off, the paint gets taken off, that we have the ability to put a good surface on, and we don't run into a similar issue. To that end, when we've been out to bid, it has come in higher than we would like. We divvied up and broke the bid up into different pieces, having the building sectioned off. Our, the bidder that put in for that increased his cost to accomplish that. So I think that what you probably will hear tonight is, we probably do need more money, is the ultimate message if we're going to be able to do this project in the style and form that the preservation specialist has indicated to us the facility needs. So I think that tonight, certainly Sean can kind of comment a little bit, and then obviously the library trustees. We don't have extra money floating around. So it would be my recommendation that the capital budget form, when we have those forms out by the end of this week, that a capital budget request be put in for funding from town resources, but where it is preservation and where the primary funding source that was done last year, two years ago, last year, that that went through CPC, and it probably makes sense to go back to CPC. And to indicate to them that it is more extensive in terms of the restoration elements, and that additional funding would be needed to accomplish that.
Thank you, Chris. Can you remind us what the amount was approved?
I know the available budget was, for painting, is four hundred and ninety thousand. I think the overall was...
Five hundred and forty thousand.
Five forty.
That was the original CPC.
Thank you, Sean.
Did you hear that?
Say it again.
Okay, the original CPC authorized was five hundred and forty thousand, which included the architectural services.
And what were the bids, Sean?
The bids in April ranged, and that was our first bid process, when we had our first bud, budget, was six hundred and thirty-six to seven seventy-six. That was the range between four bidders.
Thank you.
And then we broke it up in May and went back out to bid. Those bids came back in June with one bidder. Another one came in, he was too late. The one bidder with his total accrued amount went over a million dollars.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Larry?
Wow.
Yeah.
I don't know what to do with that, a million dollars, and there's a, and, you know, we live in a great town. I think the number one negative comment I get is the way the library looks, with the, you know, four-by-fours holding up the columns, but there's, and I, I guess there's no recourse at this point. I don't know where to go with it.
Actually, Larry, I don't see any other recourse. Either we're going to need the money to do the restoration properly, or we don't do it properly.
Janelle?
I'm curious, I missed where we stand on the columns. Are we going with wood or plastic?
Wood.
And that's more money?
That was definitely more money, but it's the only thing that was approved by the historic.
Right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Ward trustee. As many, if not all of you know, the trustees at the library have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this town. Not only to oversee and commit to quality resources and services, but to the preservation of the facility itself. Now, in this case, the facility, two pieces of our beautiful building are very historic. So it's a complicated project. All of us went through many, many months of analyzing the project, having it approved, and attempting to move forward. I would say that everybody here is disappointed. We all wanted to see the work start this summer. The tremendous amount of work by our project manager, by our town administrator, by everyone involved, all the boards and committees that moved along with us through this process. But in our role as advocates for the taxpayers, we need to pursue this. This is our responsibility. And as such, you know, we certainly are willing to return to CPC with information that would hopefully result in some funding from them. We certainly will research and pursue any grants that might be of little assistance to the project. Although to date, we haven't found any that would make any true significant difference, but we'll continue to do that. And hopefully, you know, the avenue through the CPC will, will work out. However, we have to say, because of our responsibility to our taxpayers and our library users, that we will bring an article for the additional funding if we are forced to, because that's where we are. It's part of why we're elected, it's part of why we've gone through this process. We started talking about the condition of the library, actually back in about 2012, where we went to CPC and got a little bit of funding, and a small amount of work was done by, you know, highway and maintenance, whatever they could do. But in 2014, CPC finally insisted on this appraisal so that we could do this project correctly and for the long term. We don't want to turn around and ask for a significant amount of money in five or six years because it wasn't done correctly. So it's been a long haul, and, for a lot of people. And we appreciate all the support we have received, and we are going to just gather up our energy, as we all will have to, and pursue this. The work that's been outlined needs to be done. No one disagrees with that, I, you know, the scope of the work, the project the same, it's just more expensive. So we, you know, had the assessment in 2015, and we are here at this, you know, at this point in time and find ourselves in this situation, which is disappointing, but it's not something we can't overcome. So, you know, again, as we go along, appreciate all of your support, and we certainly will do whatever we can to take the figure that's proposed and make it as, you know, tight as we possibly can to get the work done completely and appropriately and historically accurately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, is there any, there's no, there's really no other option besides going back to town meeting, correct?
No, I don't believe so, Ms. Chairman. You know, there may be a possibility that we can identify some other funds from other projects that we can put towards it, so we may be able to come up with some funds. I think one of the things that was interesting, having Bob Sandborn here tonight, was when you see that the state reimburses at three hundred and, I think it was, three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-six, and these projects are going out at four hundred and seventy-six. That municipal work, because of prevailing wage and so forth, is just so much more expensive than what people get at their, at their private, you know, private residence. And this is one of those times where we're kind of seeing that on the, really on the front end of it.
Thank you. Well, you certainly have our support, I think, just a matter now of waiting until May again, so, thank you. Okay, next up is the Municipal Revenue and Economic Development Committee. This was a proposed committee last, last meeting two weeks ago, and it was rewritten and brought back. Larry, any comments on the rewrite?
Thanks again, Janelle, I have a couple of comments. It's not stated in the title, but we talked last time about having this be a selectmen's committee, at least initially, is that the intent of this? I have several comments. One is on the first, where the, part of the, of the purpose is to generate more revenue. I would like to add to that, to explore efficiencies and cost savings. Because we'll have a good group looking at what's going forward. And we're looking at revenue, we can also be looking at, you know, what can we be doing just to better utilize, better use money? My second comment is, is I'm not sure how viable this is unless we have dedicated staff support. Someone assigned, probably, you know, Chris may be planning or something, so that we have, you know, like our other committees have a staff support. You don't want them fondering without having the necessary support going into it. So I'd add that somewhere in here to make sure it's a viable committee, in my mind. And my, my third comment is that I suggested last meeting, I'm still not sure why we don't include the chambers of voting member, since the rest of the volunteers are public as well. You know, why did you, why are they still a non-voting member?
Janelle?
And those are my three comments.
I just didn't think it was appropriate. Because they, I don't know, I didn't think it was appropriate, but I guess that would be a board decision.
I...
Most of our committees are volunteers.
Right.
And when there are liaisons from one committee to another, they are non-voting, right?
Yeah. I just felt, my opposing view on that is, is that they're all volunteers, and to some extent, chamber is a volunteer organization, and they're having input, doesn't serve a... I'd like to put them as the same status as the others in the room, and have them be a voting member, but that's my two cents.
I don't know that you can do that, actually, though. I don't, I don't know.
Chris?
Yeah, we need to...
Any comments on this?
mitigate our argument.
I was going to say, I've been commenting, I've been commenting a lot on these things tonight. You know, I guess personally, you... You know, I guess personally, you're just kind of thinking about it. I don't, I mean, it's not really anything different than having professional staff assigned to a committee. I mean, the chamber provides a function and they understand the economic elements a lot better than town staff would, so I think having them on as a voting member, I don't think there's any issue with that. From an ethics standpoint, I guess, is really the only time that that would come up, if that they were a member of a, whatever, they owned a hotel and we were considering increasing the hotel tax, then they probably would want to recuse themselves from votes of that nature. But I think as long as the person that goes on from the chamber understands that, you know, there are going to be potentially conflict elements, that, you know, they could probably go on and I think would probably have some value added to understanding. I mean, we have a monthly meeting now in which we talk about issues and some of the issues we talk about is, you know, what's appropriate for like the middle school, as an example, or the cultural center, for example, you know, what type businesses do we want to recruit for there? And those four profits that go there, we send to the chamber. So there are already some of those opportunities for coordination and I think this would just be a more formal opportunity to solidify that.
Chris, thoughts on professional staff assigned to it? Planning or...
Yeah, she's in the room, unfortunately, so I probably would, I probably would have the planner. And then I've done a fair amount of economic development, so maybe as a secondary resource that if she needed my assistance to have me kind of come in and help. But, you know, I don't want to load her down too much. I already have her doing a lot of grants for us and things of that nature.
And I knew it was a tough request. I just think it's vital for the success of the committee.
I agree. So I'm completely comfortable with the charge, adding that, adding the explore efficiencies and cost savings, having the town planner be the professional staff, and having seven members, including a voting member of the Chamber of Commerce, as long as they're resident of the town of Harwich.
So that will actually negate one of the liaisons, though, because the way it's set up right now, the seven voting members have a job. There's chair, vice chair, clerk, liaison to the housing committee, liaison to real estate and open space, liaison to finance, and liaison to planning.
Okay, so we'll make it eight members. It's our committee, we can make it as many as we want.
You don't want to have an odd number?
Just try it and see what happens.
So it's eight, okay. And then, but, you know, I'm still a little leery about the vote for the chamber. I don't know why I am. I have to put my thoughts around that a little bit more so I can verbalize, but I just, I think...
Do you want to bring this back September fifth?
I think because it's just one person and I don't...
Bring this back September fifth?
Yeah, let's bring it back with the full board.
You may want Don Howell, who has the experience of being on the Charter and Bylaw Committee to kind of, you know, get his two cents for formation.
I'm fine with that, I want to work it out.
Okay, bring it back.
My opinion's obviously right, but I'll go with it.
Okay, next up, joint meeting between the Selectmen and the Planning Board to discuss priorities. Will have the Planning Board members come on up? Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. You can sit next to me, Joe, I won't bite.
I will get in trouble.
Sit here.
Actually, Mr. Jim, we could crawl in there, he'll be back tomorrow night.
Evening, Chairman.
We can...
Want to call a meeting to order?
We can pass that down and we can share this one.
Call a meeting of the Howard Planning Board, Jointive Howard Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to order on August 21st at eight o'clock in the evening. Now, I suspect the first item, do you have an agenda there?
Thank you. We have the list of priorities sent earlier by Ally.
That's probably a good place to start.
Sure. Ally, do you want to take the lead on this?
Sure. So I'll just kind of go through the Planning Board's list of priorities and then I think the real goal of this is just to hear what the Board of Selectmen, kind of how they feel about them and if they think we're going in the right direction, because I think this is an important meeting so that we can get everyone on board, everyone on the same page going forward. So I'll just quickly go through them. So the first one, and again, these are in no particular order. Research and inspect highly trafficked sidewalk areas for ADA noncompliance, recommend a priority list of these ADA noncompliant areas, and initiate construction. Further research might be needed to sources as the sidewalk funds, funding sources such as the sidewalk fund. The second one is review and draft a recreational marijuana bylaw. We obviously, through town meeting, put the recreational marijuana moratorium on until June, so it's important that the town start thinking about which way to go forward with that. Review and draft amendments to the existing accessory apartment bylaw. Review, revise, and draft amendments to the town's local initiative program, regulations and procedures, so that has to do with 40B, the comprehensive permit. Review and revise the commercial village overlay district zoning. And then the last one, which is kind of a little far-reaching, but the Planning Board just wanted to put this on the table. Start new comprehensive plan by reviewing the scope of work, estimated time, and cost. So those are some of the priorities that the Planning Board discussed and thought they were the best course of action going forward, and we just really wanted to hear what the Selectmen thought of them.
Thank you, Ally.
Yeah.
I agree, this is an important meeting. I think we all witnessed, I know Larry, you were involved in the East Harwich planning that got tabled in about fifteen minutes and it was two years of people's lives.
It was two.
Joe, you were certainly involved in that, so I think we're trying to avoid any of those, so we want to make sure we're working on things that we're on the same page on. Is there a list, is there any priority to this? I know you said that in no particular order. Does the Planning Board have a priority to this list?
Well, I think, a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. First, we'd like to get a few things done, number one, and I think the initial, the first recommendation that we look in the parts of town that have sidewalks and roadways that are not compliant with ADA and work on putting those back in order. There is a sidewalk fund. It's now available for youth after the town meeting, and I believe somewhere in the vicinity of fifty-five thousand dollars. I suspect if there's any interest on it, accumulating it about a nickel a month or something. So there's several areas we have identified there and I think that, first of all, it's something we should do, there's no question about it, it's the law. And we've got the money to do it, why not do it? But, you know, a couple of them, one area is across from the police and forest station, you know, there's a sidewalk there and all of a sudden, bingo, if you're coming across in your wheelchair, you can go down the street, but you can't get on the sidewalk. Outside of that, you know, and now that you're using the cultural center, you might as well do that area. And there's a few other areas in town that we can do immediately and probably do it with town resources, so, you know, it's for all less money upfront.
We talked, Larry, if I might, Mr. Chairman, on the sidewalk coming out of Howardport Center, past the Melrose and up there, we talked about connecting that sidewalk down to Sacra Tucket, that we thought it would be important.
Chris, that was on the schedule, I believe.
Yeah, we will have that on the capital plan for this year coming up, and we are trying to identify funding sources. We do have a commitment already from the, from Mass DOT to do that work. The problem is that they didn't say when, so it could be one year, it could be twenty years, and I think we want to figure out something more specific than that.
Do you agree with us, there's money in the sidewalk fund, though?
Yeah, I don't know, fifty-five thousand dollars sounds semi impressive, but it's not going to get us very far, is a blunt way to put it.
And then I think another thing is that the area that Joe talked about works nicely in with Sacra Tucket Harbor itself, so it's kind of a wasteland once you leave Braxton, head up toward Red River Beach or the, Julian Road. And it would be, it would be money well spent if we could, if we could either get that going there or put it in with something else.
Janelle?
Thanks to the efforts of Matt Hart and others, we now have a disability rights committee reactivated, and I know Matt has already started looking into grants for that sidewalk area, and I'm wondering if, you know, we can, you as the Planning Board can work hand in hand with the Disability Rights Committee and try to find some more of that free money, so to speak, to augment our fifty-five thousand dollars.
Maybe it's only old guys like Matt and I remember, he's a former chairman of our board.
I'm sure that that would be a very good...
We'll volunteer the planner, she's very good at that.
I'll do my best.
So we'll, we'll continue on those, on those two or three tracks. And the next one is the recreational marijuana bylaw. So that, Jim?
Yes, I think on that bylaw, the first thing that we need to do is we need to get clarification from town council with regard to what powers the town has. I mean, just, my knowledge is sort of related to just reading the newspaper articles in the Globe about the recent piece of legislation, but from those articles, it appears to me is if the town of Harwich, who voted no on recreational marijuana, through the Board of Selectmen, may have the right to completely ban recreational marijuana from the town. If so, that is sort of a break front decision that the Board of Selectmen need to make, because if the Board of Selectmen decide to ban recreational marijuana from the town, then there is no reason of going through the exercise of doing zoning ordinances in order to develop zones where that can be sold. So I think we need to get clarification from town council with regard to what powers the town has in this area, and then based on that, decide how to proceed, and I think the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen need to work very closely together on this issue.
Great, thank you.
We've already heard from the Chief of Police and Detective Sergeant Brackett, they came in and didn't need a lot of convincing, I don't think, with our board, but they came in and explained why they thought it'd be a good idea if we didn't have any sale of marijuana in the town of Harwich.
Chris, can you tell us where we are with legal?
Yeah, just two things. Number one, I had a conversation with John Giorgio, our attorney, he is, we have him penciled in for your next meeting to kind of go over. I think as you kind of alluded to, Jim, the option, because the town voted to not approve it, the first real critical hurdle you should have is, do you want to have these establishments or not? I agree a hundred percent. And then, secondly, we have a moratorium, and that moratorium, though, will only go until June 30th, and they're talking about potentially licensing establishments at the state level, I think in April is what I heard. And our moratorium will probably keep us in good standing until June, but that's not much time. And one thing that he did say to me is that, at least from what he's hearing at the, at the State House, there will be no moratorium that will go past December 31st of 18. So moratoriums are not going to be the long-term solution, it's only a short-term solution.
Chris, I think you bring up a very good point, because depending on what the determination of the Board of Selectmen is with regard to whether another town is going to allow the sale of recreational marijuana, if that decision is to proceed with the sale, then the Planning Board has a fairly large effort of doing some research determining, you know, how that should be conducted within the town and what areas of the town, developing zoning ordinances, going through public hearings, and then going through town meeting. So, Chris, you're absolutely right. I mean, I think there needs to be a decision relatively soon this fall by the Board of Selectmen as to how the Board of Selectmen would like to proceed. And then, if the Board of Selectmen wants to allow it, then the Planning Board has a large task of, you know, sort of defining the where, the when, and developing a zoning ordinance that can go through public hearing, go through town meeting, get approved by the Attorney General.
Thank you. Chris?
The town attorney did also indicate to me in a conversation that not only do we have to do a zoning bylaw, but he strongly recommended that we do a corresponding town bylaw and that we do a simultaneous approach. So that's something that, I don't know if the effort would be doubled, but we certainly have to educate people as to why we need to have two zoning and a regular bylaw in order to address this issue, if the Board wishes to address it in a regulatory way.
Janelle?
I recall us voting to extend the state moratorium another six months or into November.
No, it went to June 30th of 18.
Which was the state one, right? That's the state moratorium.
There was no state moratorium, I don't believe. It was, individual towns did moratoriums and the state acknowledged that they were legal.
I remember November for some reason.
One thing, we're still waiting for some clarifications from the state on what all this means as well. You know, one thing we have to look at is a financial, potential financial impact, and I know one of the things that had come out of the AG's office was, if you opt out as a town, you also opt out of the money that comes along with that tax. So if fifty communities out of the three hundred and fifty-one split the forty or whatever, million dollars, right. So, you know, that's something that we're still waiting for more and more, more information. But this is pretty time-sensitive, so I think we need to...
He's on, he's on his, we're on his calendar for the next meeting, so.
Okay. Chairman?
So the summary of that is that we have to look at that, and that could be a considerable amount of work. The next item is review and draft amendments to the existing accessory apartment bylaw. And for this, Ally is looking into the Falmouth bylaw. And that being the case, not that I would suggest plagiarism, but wherever it says the town of Yarmouth, I could say the town of Harwich, it would work just fine.
I agree with you.
Falmouth or Yarmouth?
Falmouth, yeah. But there's a few other ones, too. Falmouth was just an example, but there are a few. I think P-Town just passed a new one as well that I've been hearing about, so.
And that's, I would imagine, Selectmen Kavanaugh, anyway, sent a note today, and that was on her top priority, because with our housing production plan and trying to go somewhere with the housing push, that would be one that would be extremely important.
Which leads nicely into, into the next one, the local improvement, I mean, sorry, the local initiative program. And it would, would you like to summarize that?
Sure.
Because that's, I know it's very important to you and to the housing production.
Yeah, so it's the LIP, which is the local initiative program, and it basically is just an outline of a plan, how, basically stating how the town ranks different 40B applications and how we review them, if we're going to support them or not. And the last time it was updated was in May 9th, 2000, so it's been seventeen years. I read through it, you know, most of it still is very applicable, but there's just a few things that probably could need changing. It doesn't have to go to a town meeting or anything like that, it's mostly an in-house type of review to look at it. But it's been seventeen years, and it's also outlined in the housing production plan as something that we should look at, so I think it's wise to have it on our list.
And it's something we can tick off the list relatively quickly and just get it out of the way, and it helps in the long run.
Ally, could you send through, Chris, your notes on that, your thoughts on the immediate changes that you see?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
And next is review and revise the commercial village overlay district. We're under the impression that it was, go ahead.
Yes, as many of you may remember, about two years ago, we had been under the impression that the commercial village overlay district in Harwich Port was the zoning that governed development in Harwich Port. Unfortunately, what we learned was that the intent of that was that it would be voluntary and not mandatory for development in Harwich Port. Now, as you've all probably been observing, Harwich Port is becoming a much more active area. We have one major development proposal that has just been approved, which luckily is consistent with the requirements of the commercial village overlay district, and basically is giving us a type of development that I think, you know, everybody agrees is desirable for the Harwich Port area. There are additional pieces of property in Harwich Port and what we would like... and what we would like to see is, we would like to review the existing commercial village overlay district, make sure that we still feel that it's appropriate for all of Harwich Port, and go through the process of making that the mandatory and required zoning for the Harwich Port area and to try to do it within a timeframe before we get any more major development proposals in Harwich Port. And I think we review that, view that timeframe as trying to get this done and to the town meeting next May. There have been efforts looking at this prior to Ally coming, when David Spitz was here. It's my understanding that at least a draft of such zoning amendment has already been done. I think what we need to do is we need to dig that out, have the planning board review it, assuming the planning board is still in, you know, in agreement with it, then present it to the Board of Selectmen, to make sure that the Board of Selectmen is, you know, agreeable to it. And then go through the process of having public meetings and public hearings and hopefully leading to a vote at the May town meeting next year.
Thank you, Jim. This is one.
Mr. Chairman, just a piece of that. I think the board should understand where you see that split rail fence in Harwich Port is where there's going to be, beginning in September, a two-story building.
That's the basic outline of the building.
And I think a lot of people, both businessmen and tenants, people who live in the town, always thought that was a public parking lot. It's not, it's private property and it's, that, once that building goes up and they number those parking spaces and people start to use them every day, you're going to see a difference in, in downtown Harwich Port.
Janelle.
So that leads me to ask, what about the parking plan that Linda Sebula showed it to me when I first became Selectman? That seems like something we would need to bring back to the table and the schoolhouse parking plan.
So this is a good case of one that, this is one that, I got involved in the Cumberland Farms issue kind of late in the game. And this is one that I wouldn't support. I'd have to see, I guess, the, the, and me personally, not the board. That's why I'd say we should work closely on this and, and make sure we get both board votes. I'd like to see a list of property owners this is going to affect, because I'm not sure. I, I believe this came from David Spitz, right? He brought this with him when he started as a planner? This idea, the, the, bringing the buildings to the street? Or was that, that was, so that was David's initiative? You know, we're, we're basically telling private property owners what they can and can't do with their property. And I think as we found out with the Cumberland Farms, it turned into quite a controversial issue.
We lost.
It cost the town some money too. So I think that this particular one, I agree with you. Let's get some votes and see if you guys support it and get it back to us and vote, see if we support it before we do any work on it.
No, I agree, Mike.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then the next item on the agenda is start a new comprehensive plan by reviewing the scope of work, estimated time, and cost. There's, what's the date on the last plan, two thousand and ten?
Twelve.
Twelve. So, and, and we haven't really looked at that very carefully over the last couple of years, so it, it deserves a look. It, it might well be time with a variety of things, with searing and with the growth in the downtown and growth in other parts of town. It might well be time to look at it. So there's, there's a lot of moving components to it. And, and I think this is something that the planning board should work with the Board of Selectmen and get, and get a commitment so we'll all know we're headed in the right direction, because it's not an inconsequential lot of money we'll be asking for. And, and again, this is something that, that we look at that's shaping the town of Harwich for a good, long while, as well as a significant amount of money. And I think that, that, I suspect you all agree with us and it, it's something that we'll, we'll work through the comprehensive plan, get that to you to see if you think that we're going in the right direction, whether we're going to go to Harwich. So, so, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, what I would like to add is, you know, sort of taking off on what Larry has said, I think the comprehensive plan is a very important document and it needs to be a living document, because it needs to be a document that sort of guides the future development of the town of Harwich for the next, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And that all the other various plans, the housing production plan, the open space and recreation plan, all sort of fit in the context of being part of the comprehensive plan. And it all needs to be coordinated. But I think the most serious effort that we have in starting the process of a comprehensive plan is to sort of try to come up with a determination of what do the residents of Harwich want Harwich to be? Ten years from now, fifteen years from now, twenty years from now. And what I would like to see in the beginning of the comprehensive planning effort is not just an effort by the planning board, but an effort that also includes members of the Board of Selectmen. Because I think the only way this is going to be a successful effort is if we sort of pool resources between the planning board, the Board of Selectmen, and other relevant boards throughout the town. And we need to have sort of a steering committee that would sort of overview the development of a comprehensive plan. And I think the planning board should sort of take the lead. But I would like to see members of the Board of Selectmen on that steering committee and potentially members of some of the other relevant boards throughout the town of Harwich.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, I agree with both those comments. I've talked to Larry and Jim about this, because the comprehensive plan now is five years old. It just has, it's a basis for all we do going forward. And we have some critical discussions that we need to bring dialogue. You know, we talk about affordable housing. It's clear we're going to have to be able to have higher density units in areas where it's appropriate. We have wastewater issues. And those are always touchy subjects. And so I would agree, I think we can do the work together to get a public dialogue so we define. Because that's really the structure of how we're looking at ourselves and the directional, that direction we're taking. You know, in many ways, the previous discussions are all, have to fit into this.
Correct.
Or we're not, or we're not being smart if we don't. If we move ahead with those and not have a basic structure that we agree to, then we're going to be in trouble.
And as part of that, we're going to have to deal, so we're going to have to deal with East Harwich. And there's definitely a difference of opinion about what should happen in East Harwich.
No, I think, having said that, we started out and worked several years and that even predates my last term on the board. And I know Joan Cozal worked a long time along with a lot of other members on the board. And we got, just so happened, boards changed, everything changed, the Board of Selectmen changed. And we gave our recommendations a couple of years ago to the Board of Selectmen that, and at the time, it just, we didn't, I didn't know what was going to happen. Nobody knew what was going to happen. We really never, it kind of died on the order table, all things being equal. But this is something we, I've, I've talked about with several people and I think there's a chance that we could resurrect it. There's got to be some middle ground that we can find. You know, the searing is going to be coming in. That's going to make a dramatic change to East Harwich. Whether you, whether you believe it or not, it's, it's going to. So I, I think this is something that hopefully we could probably blend that together while we'd be, while we're working on the comprehensive plan, but finish it ahead of time. And I know it's contentious issue, but it shouldn't be.
Right.
And everything, I don't know if any of you have been over in that side of town lately, the last week or two, but there's a five or six lot subdivision. They're already plowing it up and putting the road in. We were talking about that when we talked about this.
Yeah, and, and you notice now that.
I mean, it's within the, you know, they're within the bylaws and everything. It's, it's.
It's a legal, legal subdivision.
That's.
And we noticed in, in Chatham, you know, the, the grand scheme of things, forty thousand square foot lots are somewhat, somewhat a waste of land to say the least. In, in Chatham, you see lots that are considerably smaller. Look out Barn Hill Road, that one, one went in very quickly and they're probably on a third of an acre, I would guess. But that's something we have to look at in a comprehensive manner, because we're going to spend twenty-five or thirty million dollars on searing.
Right. Janelle, did you have anything to add?
No.
Chris, did you want to add anything on the comprehensive plan side? That's a, that's obviously a big task and that's going to be a very time-consuming staff task.
Yeah, I think it's interesting. In my last community, we did do a comprehensive plan and I kind of, you know, my job was to kind of identify the money, but I, I did take more of a role in that than I have in, in previous jobs. And I do think, you know, if we want to lay out what the community should look like, or not should, but may look like in, in ten to fifteen years, I mean, it's a key component. So I, I think that there is a considerable amount of staff time. But at least from my perspective, it helps us too, as we do financial policies and as we try to guide the community forward, knowing where the community wants to go is, is a critical component to that.
And, and, you know, I think probably just as, as an aside at the end, we should probably use much better advertisement than we used the last time. You know, now that we're, you know, having dramatic changes with the internet, we don't need a quill pen.
East Harwich is another one. I mean, you touched on it. It's not on the list and Larry mentioned it. I don't think we're very far apart either. The first plan the planning board came up with and the first plan that East Harwich Collaborative came up with are almost identical. There's very few, very few differences. The second plan was a little bit out there for them and, and apparently at the time for a couple of the Board of Selectmen. I think at this point, it makes sense to put a working group together with a couple of members of the planning board, a couple of board members, town administration, two from East Harwich Collaborative and two business owners. And lay all the plans out on a table and see where we can agree and then go to town meeting with an agreement rather than putting something forward. Wastewater was a, was a win for this town last year. And we had, we had good support from Carol Ridley and the East Harwich Collaborative. And at this point, the public needs to know, we're not looking at developing East Harwich to, to, because we have a septic wastewater system out there. It's to do it because it makes sense to do it and, and not tie it together, because again, we do have good support. But East Harwich Collaborative, I believe, recognizes that there's some room for some growth out there and some change as well.
And it's following what the Commonwealth is looking for, is smart development.
Right. So I, I'd like to add, personally, I'd like to add that to our list. Priorities seem, I'm, I'm right on target with you guys as far as priorities go.
It's on there.
How does the, how does the board, Janelle, do you have any problem with their, what they're doing? Anything recent suggestions?
No. No, I think, when you say priorities though, they didn't have priorities, right? Or did we just go down the list?
We just kind of went down, I believe.
Yeah.
They were in no particular order. They're a list.
Right. So you don't have priorities at this point. I think adding East Harwich would be very, very smart, but other than that, I think everything's good.
Larry?
I'm fine with your discussion.
Hmm?
It's part of six. Go ahead.
Yeah, it, it would be part of, it would be part of the new comprehensive plan, but you know.
East Harwich would be?
Right.
It would be, but it would be hopefully something you'd, you'd get to, you'd finish it before you finished the comprehensive plan. I'm not looking, looking to write the constitution over again.
Well, you know, I think it's a, it's an aggressive list like you. Some of these we can tick off fairly quickly. I recognize that Ally has a job to do on top of projects that we come up with. So there's only so much she can do and, and we certainly appreciate what she does and.
We do too.
I know. Larry?
Is there any help that the Cape Cod Commission can offer with their planning groups there?
There are.
Terms of formatting dialogue, you know, just a mechanistic way maybe?
Ally's going to answer that.
There might be. I, I don't really have an answer. There might be. I can definitely reach out to them and see. I'm sure they'd be willing to lead me in the right, in the planning board.
In the past, they've been helpful in categories like that. It's hard to ask.
Yeah, I definitely agree with you.
Till we got them, they started to come to some meetings and then we couldn't find them. And I think it was more about staff appointments than it was that they weren't willing to participate.
Yeah, no, they were, they've been helpful for us in the past, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right.
Thank you for our new appointment, Mr. Chairman.
It's official. Okay, next up, recommendation for award of contract to BTT Marine Construction for the Sacquetucket Marina Project. John, Chris, do you want to give it over?
Yeah, I might, I might get us started and have John facilitate. So as, as folks are aware, we have a, a grant for a million dollars towards this project. We have in total seven million dollars that we went to the voters with. One of the things that we put in the motion, as I was, I, I looked recently, was that we are capped at that seven million dollars. It says anything, anything, any additional grants would be used to offset, specifically use the word grant. We did receive numerous bidders. The low bid is BTT Marine at six point eight, six point eight million dollars. And then the next low bid was Robert Behauer at six point nine nine for the base bid. In terms of alternate one, it was additional dredging work. That puts us over. Alternate two was additional, changing out of the decking of the, the float system. And then alternate three, escapes me at the moment.
De-icing units.
It's a de-icing unit. Thank you, John. In terms of the bid award recommendation, we're, we're fairly tight. We have a, a good track record here in the town of doing projects. We've done Allen Harbor work. We've done work at Witchmere. The amount of change orders in both of those jobs are fairly minimal. So we do believe, or my recommendation, that we do award to BTT Marine for the base bid amount only. I do want to put a couple of caveats. I've done this a couple of times when, when there are items of critical need, that you lay out and have an anticipated plan for change orders. So we would like to proceed where we will do the base bid with an acknowledgement that we probably will come back on change orders. The dredge work needs to be done. We're, we're taking pilings out that have been in there for probably fifty years. We have a fifty-year opportunity to go in and do the job right. And, and I think that that should not be, that should not be lost. So the dredging in alternate one, that two hundred and ten thousand does, in my opinion, and I think in John's opinion, needs to be done as part of this project. We can probably do on the base bid, the six point eight two six, then do a hundred thousand towards the dredging and then leave about seventy, seventy-odd thousand for contingency. That would be slightly less than one percent for contingency, but based upon our track record at Allen Harbor and at Witchmere, I, I think that's probably a reasonable amount. We do also have some funding available in our dredge account. So this would not be grant money. This would be money that we have specifically for dredging that we would also seek to do an additional hundred thousand or a hundred and ten thousand out of that to, to try to do the, the dredge work. And, and John has identified rightfully so that there is an account that we have been building up from the mooring fees and that we could do the, the decking. I, I think one thing, I, I want to really compliment John that, you know, he has looked at this as we haven't been able to do this for fifty years. So can we try to come up with a solution that will be a fifty-year solution? And I think that the, the plan that's laid out, awarding the base bid, acknowledging that we will have a couple of change orders to go forward after the project gets started, should be able to bring us pretty close to what we had originally envisioned for this project and to have this project be brought to a successful conclusion. I, I do want to comment, because there has been some material and, and I know at your place this evening that Robert Behauer was the number two bidder. There's, there's just no way under the bid law that I could recommend in good faith that we award a bid with only two thousand dollars as a contingency. It's just not enough. So I think Robert Auer, being a local company, we've had good experience with him, but the bid just came in too high to, to really be able to do anything with. And we, we did do due diligence and we have checked BTT's credentials. I think we have folks here this evening to kind of comment on that. And so a, again, it, it's my, my strong recommendation that we go ahead. I am also, you know, one of the things maybe, well, let's just rebid it. You know, the trouble with rebidding it is it's taken us a long time to get the approvals. The grant agencies, when the lieutenant governor came out, we'd already gotten a one-year extension. Our margin of error is, is gone. extension. Our margin of error is, is gone. So I think it is important that we get going if we don't want to impact and we do not want to impact the boating season next year. So we want the project done on time. But I think it's important to do the award tonight with those caveats of what will be coming afterwards.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
John, you want to add?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Rendell, Harbor Master. I'll just add, just today, we received our final signed permit from the Army Corps. So I know you're well aware, it's been a struggle and a long time coming to get all the required permits, dredge permits and the section four oh eight permit that allows us to build within the federal navigation project area. Water quality, chapter ninety-one license, CZM approval. Been a lot of approvals, a lot of testing. I just want to introduce Kevin Beruschin from what was born now G E I Consulting. Changed names a little bit, but his dedication to this project never changed. He's been with us for a couple of years now, done a heck of a job and got us to where we are now. And I think, you know, I think the project is, is well engineered, well scoped. I think the bid that Chris just outlined is very close to our original seven million. I think everybody knows we have a million dollar of Seaport money that's being applied to this project and it is available, ready to execute. And so that leaves six million dollars that the harbor will fund seventy to seventy-five percent of the debt service on that six million dollar project. So really, the boaters are paying for a large majority of this project. And the two accounts that I'd like to utilize to just do this the right way and capitalize upon the harbor being totally empty and getting as much dredging as our permit allows, which is seventeen thousand, a hundred cubic yards of material. I do have some reserves in our dredge account that I'd like to utilize. And then as far as the decking goes, I think most people know that tropical hardwood will last a whole lot longer than pressure-treated yellow pine. And now is the time to do that. If we try to do it later, it'll be so much more expensive. I do have a mooring receipts reserve fund that I have funding in order to utilize seventy-five thousand to get that done. So I would just ask for your consideration. BTT Marine, the general manager, Mr. Scott Haggerty is here in the blue shirt. And as Chris said, I know I have and Kevin have done our due diligence and looking at past projects, their resume, reached out to a number of owners and engineers on past projects and I've heard nothing but positive things. And I have some specifics if you're interested, but again, I see no reason to think that they're not qualified to perform this job.
Thank you. There's a very detailed memo of extra projects in our packet tonight. So I think clearly they're, they're qualified to do this job. Janelle? Questions?
No questions.
Larry?
Comment. I'm happy you clarified the Robert Hour. I think with all due respect, we're very parochial and it's always good to go with a local firm versus someone else. It's good for that clarification. Just to summarize, Chris, right, and John, right now, between what's approved at the town meeting and the two accounts, the two accounts you talked about, this is being funded at this time. We're not going back for more money for dredging or anything at next town meeting.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Nope, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I think the best way to look at it is the base bid.
We're through a lot of things, but we can cover it all.
The base bid work is, is being done by the town meeting vote. And we have identified some other funding sources to address what we think are critical concerns that are appropriate to expend out of. The dredge, we have a dredge account. And actually, that, the mooring account is for harbor improvements and we have used it for doing woodwork and doing things of that nature. So it is appropriate in terms of.
That doesn't affect other priority projects you may have been looking at.
No.
This same account, just to be clear, has been identified to take a portion of that every year to pay the debt service on this project over a twenty-year period. And I forecasted in a memo through Chris prior to town meeting two years ago that that was one of the sources we'd be utilizing to help fund the debt service. And we'll be able to do that.
You should be able to do that.
We will absolutely be able to do that. We generate about eighty thousand a year for that fund.
All set?
Yeah.
Matt?
I've been here before. Matt Hart, Chairman of the Waterways Committee. I want to thank John and the engineering company. The Waterways Committee has been kept abreast of every bit of this development. And we were committed, the seven million dollar number was what we went for at the town meeting. We have these other areas and you hear the other people talking about how projects have gotten more and more expensive because we have to pay prevailing wage. What John is talking about, the engineering is talking about, and I hope we're successful with a grant, we're also putting in a very sophisticated handicap access ramp that'll be unlike anywhere else in New England. And it's for the passenger boats and it's for the recreational boats. That means people will be able to safely go from the land in a wheelchair down to those boats. That was already paid for, the design, about two years ago. And that's all incorporated in this. The Waterways Committee has gone over this in detail for many months and they heard John's latest suggestion of taking care of the tropical wood and looking at the additional dredging. And they agreed one hundred percent in a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. So the dredging, John. What portion of the outer harbor or channel is included in that dredging, the total dredging number? I guess my question is, isn't the dredging money that we're talking about on Article voted by town meeting to dredge channels? That we're talking about taking the hundred thousand out of?
That's correct.
Correct, okay.
So, maintenance dredging.
Is there a portion of this dredging that would be the channel that we could, that we could clearly state to the taxpayers that the money is to dredge a channel?
Well, that's correct because part of the plan is outlined in the plan is a seventy-five foot channel coming within the harbor that leads, that's the deep draft channel that our ferries and large passengers will be taking. And part of the condition of our permit is that we have to mark that channel within the harbor and keep it dredged.
Okay. So, you know, this project, John, we, you and we've talked, first of all, thank you for all the, all the work that you did to get that permit. I mean, it's been an extremely frustrating process and thank the Waterways Committee for everything that they've done. If we weren't a year behind, more than likely, this number would be under what we voted at town meeting. I just really want to be on the record and stay on land side. I've been very clear about the three million versus three point six or whatever, whatever we're talking about. On this, the project was seven million dollars and now we're at seven point one and change with only a one percent contingency, which I'm a little bit nervous about. The fact that you have the money in the dredge account, as long as you're telling us that you're not going to come back with another article next year to replace that money in the dredge account for another channel, it would be easy for me to support using that money.
May I comment on that?
Go ahead.
Just to be clear, every year, within my budget, I have a dredge account because every year we're dredging. So it's not like I'm coming back with an article for dredge money. But some years, I'm pretty good at, at preserving those funds because sometimes I'm able to sell sand to some private homeowners and that helps recoup our dredge money. Some years I don't. I just strictly put it on. But as we recently did, we have included dredge money as part of my budget. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Well, and as long as that number's not changing, and I guess this is directed at the town administrator, because what I don't want to do is take this money knowing that we're going to replace, try and replace this money.
Yeah, the one thing, just to be clear, I mean, I think, John, we target about a hundred and fifty thousand a year to put towards dredging. We're not going to come back with three hundred thousand. It will be a hundred and fifty thousand again for the foreseeable future.
You know, and for me, Chris, it's honestly, we're looking at Lower County Road Fire Station. Twenty-two million wastewater, another three million for land side. There's a lot of numbers here that are just five million or just two million. So every hundred thousand is going to count this year. And I guess I would say the account that you're talking about, sixteen twenty-one, I believe is the account, and it's three hundred and forty thousand in it.
That's correct.
Is that what was in the memo?
Right.
Would it make more sense to spend the hundred thousand out of that account and the seventy-five thousand out of that account rather than take the dredging money?
Mr. Chairman, we certainly can. My only thought, as I was mentioning to Mr. Ballantyne, that fund has been identified to spend eighty grand a year to pay the debt service on our project.
Thank you. I heard you say that. Thank you. Okay.
I would like to ask if a favorable motion's going to be made, that it be consistent with John's memo so we get the different components in there? And you could just say from his memo of Friday, August eighteenth?
Okay. I'll take a stab at it, Mr. Chair. I move we award the contract for the Sacotucket Marina Project to BTT Marine Construction. According to the memo of, whatever the date is.
August eighteenth.
August eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen. And some of that's clear. For a base bid of six million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, plus the three contingencies, if you're taking out the dredging fund. Two contingencies.
Two contingencies.
Excuse me, because we skipped the deicing. We skipped that one. Two contingencies for the twenty-one hundred cubic yards of additional dredging and using tropical hardwood surface on all timber floats.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The, the contract, Chris, and I'm not sure it's a contract, but there's a two-page, we're going to.
We'll get that contract.
Come back to us with a contract, right?
Yeah, but that will just be in your signature folder, just a sign.
Well, that's, to me, that's a, there's no, there's no, there's nothing there. I mean, it doesn't, I don't mind, I don't mind giving the award, but I'm not signing that as a contract.
Okay.
Okay? Can we get a real contract with attachments?
Yeah, we'll get the contract squared away.
Thank you. All set with that? Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you.
He left too quickly.
I just, Chris, there's nothing there. It refers to.
Yeah, nothing referenced back to the bid submission and so forth.
All right, so next up is comor- committees, boards and discuss, boards and commission discussion. That's where I am? Yes. So I sent you all a memo. We are looking at our summer schedule.
Yeah.
Next for our committees. And we really need to reach out to our committees and have conversations about attendance. I think, other than the normal information they bring, it would be helpful if they had attendance. It would be helpful if they had their charge and thoughts of their, thoughts of charge. Rather than them just come and give us a report, it would be nice to actually get a little bit of where we're falling apart.
Makes sense.
They're not, there's still a lot of people that aren't sworn in. There's still people that haven't taken the ethics.
And I know I followed up on the treasure chest that's passed on Saturday. And, and if I may, Mr. Chair, I did ask Foster if he could help out with, be sure they had computer access here. Some of those folks don't have computers to do the ethics on, test on, at home.
Yeah, that's not a problem. If they wanted, they can stop by our office and we can set them up or Lincoln's.
Or they can, right. Or they have computers downstairs.
The library.
Library, they, or downstairs too. I think they felt some pressure at the library because there's always a line of people waiting for those computers.
Yeah, we can take care of them in town hall here.
The committees are our responsibility. It's not anybody else's. And at this point, the committee seemed to be a bit of a mess. We're not sure who's on some.
No, I just.
And we really need to work as liaisons with these committees. Open meeting law training, how to post an agenda, where to post an agenda.
And I did follow up on that. Just one brief comment that, sort of related issue at this point is that Janelle was asked if we could, she'd like to take on the treasure chest committee and asked if I would trade Board of Health. And I've agreed to do that.
It's fine with me. Please alert Sandy in the office as to the change and Jamie, so that Jamie can get it changed on the website or Caleb can get it changed on the website.
So that being said, treasure chest is not on the, the calendar?
These are the only ones that have confirmed so far. There'll be more.
Okay.
Go ahead, Janelle.
So Dawn has been working diligently as part of the interview committee to get an updated list of all of the committee members and whether or not they've taken the ethics course. I emailed you that. Did you share that with everybody?
I have not.
Okay. So maybe if you could get that to everybody?
The liaison list?
It's, it's members of the committees and it was originally from Anita Dusset. So I forwarded it to you and then maybe you could forward it to everybody individually. And it actually has every single committee with the members. And then that way it will be easy for each of us to contact the members and get this process down.
Because I did get information for the treasure chest, for instance.
If you just have that available for Sandy or Ann so that way they can have it too. So if someone needs to have it as a reference.
I'll make sure I get it out tomorrow. Because it's not jiving with the clerk's office. And I guess back to the consent agenda, tonight we accepted three resignations. One of them was done right. So you know, you need to tell your committee chairs that if anyone resigns from a committee, they need to do it to Anita Dusset, to the town clerk, not to the Board of Selectmen or the chairman of the committee. All resignations are made out to Anita. But we, we have to work with these. I mean, there's volunteers and I'm not harping on them, but we're not posting agendas or minutes and we need to get on that.
Also, we were, Dawn and I were discussing having KP Locke come in and have a training.
Yes, we can do that.
You were part of that meeting, right?
We could do that.
Just for open meeting law and such.
Perfect. Okay, new business, approval of scheduled annual committee meetings with the Board of Selectmen. Anyone have a problem with that?
Nope.
So we don't need a motion on that, Chris. That's all set.
Yep.
And a town administrator's report.
Under the report, I did fortunately cover a couple of these things, so it's going to be shortened on the budget timeline and, and budget and warrant timeline draft. Just so the boards are aware, I mean, some of these dates, you may want to look at your schedules, just make sure. Sandy does a good job in the office of kind of laying it out. But believe it or not, this Friday, I have to have the capital budget instructions out. So we're already into FY nineteen, which just warms my heart as we start a nine-month venture here at a town meeting. But yeah, if anyone has any dates, I think there's a couple in there to be determined between the Selectmen and FinCom. That may be something that we'll share. I'll have Sandy, if you guys are roughly comfortable with this, to have her send it out to FinCom and to the folks at Monomoy so that we were all on the same page for getting those dates squared away. But yeah, any feedback, just let me know or let Sandy know. I just have as a placeholder, we have the departmental weekly reports.
Chris, is it, just back to that real quick, is this, I'm not, I'm not seeing it, is the Saturday meeting on there and does the board still want to do the Saturday meeting? Finance committee, Board of Selectmen meeting with all of them?
Saturday, February tenth tentative.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good discussion point. I mean, I know in the time I've been here, we've done it both ways. I think we did two or three nights.
We did, when I was here, we did. But I liked the Saturday. I thought that worked well.
All right, I'll bring that back for full board discussion next week and then we'll vote on it.
I mean, that's in February, so that's a little bit time, time distance. The weekly report, just, I'm just going to acknowledge that that's in there. On, I had, it just flowed out of my head. CIVEC has a meeting on this Thursday morning at, I think he said nine thirty, on the discussion about the litigation that they're pursuing on the rate changes with, with the Eversource folks. So he was looking for a little bit of board feedback in terms of if, if they want to continue to do legal. They had authorized twenty thousand dollars for legal expenses. This is for the, I think, Mr. Chairman, you testified at the, at the hearing. And I guess this is, they are going to get up to that twenty thousand and they want to have a sense. You know, my reaction is that, you know, I think it probably makes sense for us, there's a lot of money for us to lose. It's over a hundred thousand. But if their legal costs are going to be twenty-five thousand, that'd at least be apportioned out to, over the, the electric people, the distribute, distribution. So if we're twenty percent, then we were on the, we would be on the hook for twenty percent. I think that's just an equitable approach in terms of the, the money piece. But I don't know if you want me to just send him an email to that effect, if, if the board is somewhat comfortable. It's not on the agenda, but the meeting's. It's not on the agenda, but the meeting's Wednesday morning, so.
They're going to vote on it as a committee, so I guess we'll just wait and see what the consensus of their committee is, if they want to go forward with it.
Okay, he was looking as a representative of the board, if what the board was comfortable with.
Just soon they came back to us with whether or not they want to proceed. I've had conversations with Liz Argo pertaining to the testimony I gave and kind of where they're at. And I'm not sure that they're a hundred percent. I want to make sure they're a hundred percent that they want to continue to fight.
Oh, I got you. And then just the last thing, on Public Beach twenty-two, we had a discussion at the last meeting during the non-resident taxpayers' session and we were talking about locating some kind of identifier. If we put a thirty-inch tube in the ground to identify the location, I'm pretty sure that if the sand and the elements don't get rid of it, then the neighbors will. So we are looking at putting in something more substantial that will require significant effort to vandalize. So to that end, though, because we have to put a, potentially a piling in the ground or some kind of post, believe it or not, I have to get approval from ConCom and potentially a Chapter ninety-one license. So we will pursue doing that. I think the point is well-taken. But I just want folks to know that it's probably not something we're going to be able to accomplish in two or three weeks. It will be done during the off-season.
Yeah, and just to that, I was contacted by both neighbors on both sides of the easement and they are very in favor of the town enforcing their property rights. They would like to see this happen. The elevation of incidents over there, of people being rude to them on their own properties has escalated and they want to exercise their property rights. So we'll bring that back as well.
Okay, and that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Larry?
Yeah, I have a couple comments on the weekly reports, which I thought were very good again. And Charlene's report on the, she's been very busy, and you have too, Chris, hiring, filling positions. Could, I know you're shaking your head, yes, you agree with that. I'd be interested with all the changes going on, if we can get a list of what the current list of employees are, you know, positions. And maybe last year's as well, so we have an idea of what the trend is going forward. Because we've created a couple, I think, of these new part-time positions. I'd be interested just to be able to look up.
Yeah, we provided a report to Finance Committee last year. We can update that.
Could you update that? Yeah, because that was, that was good. I didn't, what's the housing court?
Housing coordinator?
No, there's, there's one of those things, I turned mine off now.
Which one?
She was working, Charlene's working the housing court, not coordinator, court.
Charlene?
Yeah.
We did go over the other day to.
I just didn't understand that statement.
To talk about housing in general.
Maybe you could clarify that, just my education.
The housing court element in Charlene's report.
Seems they're very busy in town. I see new construction. Every time you think there can be no more. Could, I'd be interested to know what the, what the new permits are this year versus last year and maybe a couple of years back, just to get an idea of where we're going in town in terms of new construction. That's always fascinating. And there's mention in the Romans' report on the survey results on why people are satisfied with Cranberry Valley. Could we get a copy of that? I'd just be interested. I know it's a popular course, but that might be an interesting survey.
Yeah, he did a customer service survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get that.
Okay. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Janelle?
Are we Selectmen's report or are we commenting?
Selectmen's.
So I just wanted to acknowledge a death that happened suddenly last week and it was Jean McLaughlin. She was actually very active in the Disability Rights Committee. So I think it's very fitting that we revamped the committee tonight and I just wanted to offer condolences to her family. Tonight was the wake that we missed.
Michael, I have two more things if you can do this. Just wanted to mention that last week, Harwich, the Alder Cape House hosted a National Health Center Week. It's a week for the community health centers. And so there were, it was good to have it in Harwich. Another showcase for Harwich is around the Cape. There's representatives there, some, of course, Alder Cape Community Health Center, Duffy Health Center, Island Health Center and Harbor Community Health Center. And then we had Representative Sarah Peak, Will Crocker and Tim Whalen was there, as well as our State Senator Julian Zier, talking about what they're doing on community health and obviously always looking for more money, but that was in place of this. But they, this is an annual breakfast that they hold and it happened to be in Harwich this year. So that's always good. And you folks appointed me to the wastewater, the Dennis Harwich, Yarmouth wastewater. And I don't have much to report because our major effort at the moment is to, is to draft a special legislation that we can potentially bring to town meeting in the spring, start drafting that. And quite frankly, most of our discussion was, how do we inform people what our intention is going forward and what our plans are and get input and discussions? It's a very good meeting. I think Chris and I are in a bit, I don't think we want to get overly, we don't want to brag, but we're in a good shape compared in some discussions compared to Dennis and Yarmouth.
Yeah, this is it.
And unfortunately, some of it's tied nothing to do with wastewater sharing, but to the conflict they've had over the schools, which drifts over to other discussions. And so we're starting, still trying to work that out. And Chris, I'll let you if you have more to add.
Yeah, I thought one thing that came out of the meeting that made me kind of smile, I'm sure it made Larry smile, is that the town of Dennis said, you know, because you guys have been such good neighbors and have worked out things with Chatham, we think we could sign up with you guys in a snap. So hopefully we can continue with all three and come to successfully.
Yeah, we need three, but we'll.
It was nice to hear.
Charlene took the time to put the FY eighteen goals and objectives into spreadsheet form. I'm going to go through and assign Selectmen to the ones that pertain to Selectmen.
Okay.
Charlene will enter the names in there, then send it out electronically. If you disagree, then we can change at that time. But if that's okay, I'm just going to put your name next to what I think you should have been working on based on your input on the goals and objectives.
Yeah, we just put BOS, so left it for you guys.
And I've pulled out of the file the Visiting Nurses Association contract as well as the, well, the other one I was supposed to sign, the audit one. And the harbor one, we're going to hold off and get a real contract. So with that, to accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.